Shouldn't stop what we're expecting of our city to deliver. Okay, so if you can't staff, we need to go outside. That's basically, you know, there are services out there that would be able to get this done for us versus, you know, sitting trying to get staffing on board. The second thing is, is that I don't know anything that's, I would say, standard about having to add a foundation to a house that doesn't have one, that's in our, you know, on our inventory. So to go to Sourcewell for that, I'm hoping it, listen, I asked Missy, you got confidence in this group to do this? She does, and I'm good with that. But what I'm trying to say is, that, to me, is a very specialized, something that isn't done every day. Most of the time, we have foundations that houses are put on, not, no foundation so that the floor is swaying and people are putting their foot through it. That's not normal. So we're utilizing one of those Sourcewell, you know, contractors for that, and that's not standard to me. So anyway, I'll open it up to the rest of my colleagues. I think I made my point clear.
No, I think, two weeks ago, you and I made our points very, very clear. And so I'm happy to see such progress in the last two weeks. But we will be, and I appreciate you doing the monthly updates.
Yes, sir.
I'll continue to get updates every other week when I meet with you.
Yes, sir.
Because this just affects every single department.
Now, I interest, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, to not allow that to be the case. Again, I'm really grateful for the collaborative approach we've been able to take, Ms. Jellin and myself, working with the purchasing division in terms of external resources. We've identified what we feel is a great opportunity and structure. So that coupled with the opportunity that has been outlined by Ms. Darduncley, Ms. Cudow, as well as the efforts to achieve full employment in that section, I think we'll have a better place. So we look forward to updating the commission on a monthly basis. Your next update to this effect will be June 6th, enabling us to offer respective progress because there's a lot underway, as well as striking the balance with respect to external resources to help us get to where we need to be in the coming months. So, thank you.
All right, very good. Anything else? Can we move on? Great, all right. So we're going to now move to the public comment portion of the meeting. Number one, when you guys are coming up to speak, just queue up, make sure that you've signed in, your name and address. Everybody will have three minutes. If you have a group here of six or more people that are not willing to speak, you can ask for six minutes. There is a time limit, however, of one hour for public comments. So we are starting at 5:00. It's going to end at 6:00. So keep that in mind for your fellow members out in the public that might want to speak that are coming up behind you. So for the record, and there's two items on the agenda that you cannot speak to, and those are 8A and 8A1. Those are quasi judicial and public hearing items. We will allow you to speak at that time if you wanted to speak on either 8A or 8A1. Otherwise, anything you'd like to say, come on up, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. You got it. Right, right here. Yep, right here, no problem. You can come sit if you want.
Oh, I'd love that so much. So my name is Carrie Delafield, and...
Siobhan Broian.
Lauren Tim.
And we all work at Coco &amp; Co., Morley, and Periwinkle, which are three of the stores that are now on the Avenue. We love Delray. We appreciate that everything is trying to be better in Delray. The parking is a much bigger deal than I think any of you may realize. And I, I understand that, just as you said, you know, $4, that's not going to make a difference. I can tell you honestly how much it makes a difference. I'm now paying $600,000 in taxes a year. So when you look at that, I actually am paying for parking. Does that make sense? Where I need it so that people can have easy access, and they go other places. The people that spend the most, we all know this, people that spend the most want something for free. Not saying free, but they really, I had our biggest client, our biggest client, because of the events and everything else downtown that deter people that actually live here from going downtown now. Now, hearing this, she was like, I'm just not doing it anymore. I'm going to have to go to the mall. And you know what? Doesn't sound like a big deal, but I've got three kids in college, and, you know, I have 50 people that work for me, and yes, there's so much to consider. The people that work, yes, the parking lot putting just the $2 up, it makes a big difference. It does. And I know there are the parking garages, but there's things happening that have happened in front of our store, behind our store, that I don't feel comfortable my girls leave alone and go in the dark and have to go up four, you know, stories in the parking garage. But I beg of you, please have conversations with us as business owners before making these decisions. It's really important. And I will, I will give you my time, I will give everything, and I know you're here to represent us, but it's a big, big, big deal. And there was a huge, huge, huge study done, and I don't know if any of you have read it, but there is real, real, real data that I'd love to be considered, honestly. I said it today, I wore black because there was the death of my businesses. That's how big a deal it is.
Give us your address also.
The stores are 339 East Atlantic, 415 East Atlantic, and 209 East Atlantic.
Okay, you're speaking for the store?
Yes, I am. All three. And there are so many people in agreement, and as I said, just, I'd love to have a conversation before that's completely, we have ideas that might also help build revenue. And by the way, I know how expensive it is to, we had other places that I had stores that they ripped out the meters because it was such a big deal. So there's maintenance issues, how much is the contract? All those things need to be really considered before just deciding. And also, the beach is a natural resource that I love all of us to be able to use. But when they go and spend all day there, if you're charging less for people to go sit all day at the beach where we pay the resources to clean up, you know, we have to pay for all of the things to maintain that beach, at least the people coming in and spending money, we're going to charge them more, and they're actually giving revenue that comes back to the city. So I think that that's also kind of an inverted thing. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hill.
Good afternoon, everyone, to the mayor, city manager, city commissioners, city attorney, clerks, residents. My name is Kenya Madison, Kenya Chaney Madison. I reside at 301 Northwest 7th Avenue, Delray. And I am the senior director for Healthier Delray Beach, and we are here today to say thank you to the mayor, the city commissioners, and the city of Delray Beach at large for your partnership, your support of the Get Your Green On campaign for the last eight years. I think my math is correct. And I will take just a couple of minutes to share the story that in May of 2016, Healthier Delray Beach and students at Atlantic High School and Village Academy through the Teen Life and HDB Club wanted to encourage the community to give attention to their mental health and awareness and wellness. Everyone was encouraged to wear green and post pictures on social media, as we know that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and green is the associated color. And their intention was to just bring greater attention, greater awareness to that simple fact, that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and green is the associated color. We did not know how it would grow over the years. However, in 2017, 2018, and 2019, Birth to 22 United for Brighter Futures and Alliance of Palm Beach County and Community Providers partnered with Healthier Delray Beach to take the campaign countywide. More than 100 providers, government agencies, schools, media outlets, and businesses have participated each year, and over 6,000 individuals wore green and posted pictures in those years. The Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, 15 additional cities, and multiple boards and agencies adopted Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Proclamations in the month of May. In the years 2020 and 2021, we continued to serve the community virtually through the COVID-19 pandemic, recognizing the toll that the pandemic was taking on residents' mental health, and the campaign was more important than ever to encourage self-care. During May 2022, Palm Beach County honored behavioral health again, and here we are in 2023, thanking you for your support. We appreciate the partnerships, and we look forward to serving our community and honoring mental health and taking care of everyone's mental health in this year and the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pass this up for the commission and the management. Good evening, everyone. David Schmidt, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I'm passing around my presentation because I have some parts of the city rules for your procedure at meetings cited in here, and I'm not going to read them into the record in the interest of time. But I'm here tonight on behalf of Ann Koplis regarding the denial of a request for a waiver to Section 4.3.4K of the Land Development Regulations to approve a dwelling unit for her property at 1115 North Swinton Avenue. The matter was heard by the City Commission on March 6th. Initially, there was a vote in favor of granting the request, which was a 2-2 vote, and under the city rules, a tie vote is considered a denial. Following that vote, the city attorney recommended a motion to deny the waiver, which was approved 3-1. This second vote, while not necessary under city rules, dramatically changed my client's ability to request a reconsideration of the original vote. My client was not aware of the changes under the city rules when the second motion was made. Under city rules, if there's a tie vote, any member of the city commission may request at the next regular meeting that the item be placed on a future agenda for consideration. Because the second vote was held, this changed the procedure, which my client was not aware of. Then, only a member who voted on the prevailing side of the motion can make a motion to reconsider. Since the next regular meeting was held after the election, the only remaining member of the three who voted to deny was Mayor Petrollia. Therefore, the second vote to deny reduced the number of members of the commission who could move to reconsider from five, under the tie vote scenario, to only one, under the pass vote scenario. In addition, my client was informed by staff that the next regular city commission meeting following the March 6th meeting was going to be held on April 4th, 2023, and I've attached a copy of the email from staff to my client in that regard. In fact, the next regular meeting was held March 30th, as the organizational meeting was changed to the organizational meeting and a regular meeting. My client was not aware of this change and was not informed of the change by staff. Although I requested in my letter to the City Commission of March 10th, 2023, and there's a copy attached, that a motion to reconsider be made at the next regular meeting, no motion was made. While we can still make a motion or ask that a request, a motion for reconsideration be made, it's now considered untimely under the city rules, and additional requirements now come into play for a commissioner to make the motion. These requirements would not have been met if the original motion to approve, which ended in a tie vote, had stood without the second motion to deny. And I've got the rule cited in my materials. So because of the unnecessary second vote to deny the approval and the failure of staff to notify my client of the change of date of the next regular meeting of the commission, on behalf of my client, we respectfully request that the commission pass a motion to reconsider this matter at a future meeting.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Yvonne Odom, 3905 Lawson Boulevard, Mayor, Commissioners. Going to speak quickly. First of all, I'd like to also thank you for mental health awareness that's very personal to me, and I've been participating all those years. Second, CRA Independent versus Commission-led. I was always personally opposed to the takeover. I didn't like it the way it was done. It was wrong then, and it's still wrong. The seven people that served were caught off guard, and in my opinion, their feelings were hurt, as I remember. But if you must, just keep the five-member commission CRA. The extra two people serve no real purpose, in my opinion. And in fact, it was, to me, more a distraction and an embarrassment. Call a spade a spade. The third thing I want to speak about is the golf course. My vote is none of the above. Go back to the citizens and let us figure it out. No selling of our land, you may never get it back. You made three major decisions without asking the citizens first, the CRA, the old-school square, and selling off of the golf course. Don't keep making that same mistake. Citizens first, input, then make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hold the applause, guys, because we're going to have quite a few people coming in, and we want to make sure we can get everybody to speak. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy Vice Mayor, and Commissioner. Tenille DeCosse, 2567 Dorson Way, Delray Beach, of course. I'm here to talk about something that's near and dear, and I guess because of my, my career, which is a human resources director, and it's all about employees and, you know, saving money for the city and a whole bunch of stuff. But what's important to me, that Vice Mayor, I really want to applaud you because you brought this up maybe about a year or two, but you didn't have the votes. And I can't comprehend why the mayor and others that are no longer sitting up there did not support Juneteenth for employees. That's an important day. I'm asking you, maybe you can think about it, maybe if you can't afford it this fiscal year, wait until next fiscal year. I think that, you know, other cities, including the city I work for, we adopted Juneteenth. A lot of cities adopted Juneteenth. Delray needs to get on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Burstein, 2850 North Clearbrook Circle. I'm on the HOA Board of Clearbrook, a 72-home community along Homewood Boulevard between Atlantic Avenue and Lawson. On Thursday, the Clearbrook HOA unanimously passed the following resolution. We, the Homeowners Association Board of Clearbrook, stand firmly against the four proposals to redevelop the Delray Beach Municipal Golf Course that are currently before the Delray Beach City Commission. We fear the traffic impacts and the effects on the quality of life on our community, as well as the communities around us. We believe that the selling of public green space for a development of such size would be a decision that the city and its residents would regret. We ask the Delray Beach City Commission to reject all four proposals and then truly solicit community input before moving forward with any additional requests for proposals related to the golf course. The communities around the golf course have really gotten to know each other the last couple of months. I'm going to point out a few people who are in the audience or waiting to speak. Dr. Lori Vinicor, president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations. She has written you a letter that she and the alliance are voicing their opposition to the redevelopment plans. Dom Carty, president of Woodlake, a 292-home community along Homewood. Woodlake passed a resolution last week similar to the one adopted by Clearbrook. In the audience, I've seen HOA directors and residents of Condos at Fairways, 72 homes, Fairways at Delray, 46 homes, Coral Trace, 282 homes, High Point One, 248 homes. Simply put, the size and scope of the four redevelopment plans are too great. We already are worried about the traffic patterns from the 292 apartments set to open at Atlantic and Congress, something the mayor voiced concern about in November 2020. There was a reason why there was such anger and confusion at the February meeting at the clubhouse. We felt blindsided by the scope and size of the proposals. For example, the survey, the survey didn't list traffic as a concern, and as Commissioner Frankel pointed out at the March 28th meeting, that of the 340 people surveyed, 339 were golfers. That survey never made it to our communities. We felt we didn't have a voice. We truly appreciate you all pausing the process and allowing us to have a voice the past two months. And our voices are collectively saying, we don't want this. We don't want any of the four proposals. We recognize that just being against something is easy. If the four proposals are rejected today, we want you to know that we are ready to put in the work and help in whatever way possible to revitalize our municipal golf course. We want the golf course to thrive, we want our city to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
It doesn't count what I say. Go ahead. Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jay Alpern, 3130 Lawson Boulevard, Delray Beach. Through my contacts and conversations with some of the city commissioners, I feel pretty confident that tonight we're going to see the P3s withdrawn. I, but that's not the end. And you've heard from others, there's a lot of talented people with knowledge and abilities in this town, and I would urge you to consider, let us put together a committee to come up with other ways to save and preserve and restore the Delray Beach Golf Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, good afternoon, I guess, still. And congratulations to the two new commissioners. I want to make a couple of comments on your CRA discussion that you've been having.
Ma'am, I think you have to introduce yourself and name...
Oh, I'm sorry. Joy Howell, and I'm 25 Northwest 24th Court. Okay, I must be out of practice at this. Okay, so I want to talk about the CRA. The current CRA has been highly successful, and congratulations. It's been getting alleys, sidewalks, buildings, and streets built and repaired in northwest, southwest, truly an area of blight, as well as Osceola, et cetera. This after years of the previous CRA, which really wasn't accountable to the people or the community, and didn't get the money into the areas of need. You're discussing taking away two seats at the table with full voting rights held by Black representatives. Will this not be a step backward for the Black community? To lose two minority seats with full voting rights in exchange for perhaps a handful of non-voting advisory board positions, I just don't understand it. Angie Gray and Kelsey Brooks have been a guiding light for the current CRA board and commission as current full-voting rights board members and should be retained. When their terms end, two more minority community members with full voting rights should take their place. Please keep the current CRA board, which is accountable to the people, as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Hello, Max 1705, or Max Zengage, 1705 Northwest 4th Ave. Last two weekends ago, we celebrated the rebirth of the bed races. That was an amazing win, and Delray Fire took home the trophy. Very, very excited to bring that back. For Father's Day, we have Delray Concorde. It is a large car show and full day of experiences with classic cars. It's a free public event. It is off-season, and thank you, Commissioner, for considering the sponsorship for that and this investment in the off-season and our nonprofits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicole Grimes, 614 Southeast 4th Avenue, Delray Beach. I own Grimes Events and Party Tents, also located in Delray Beach. I'm a small business and women-owned company. We rent tables, chairs, tents, and everything else you need to create an incredible atmosphere for your event. I work closely with many local nonprofits as a way of giving back to our community. For example, I did the Habitat for Humanities Rock the Block event at Pompeii Park this past weekend, and I've also done Events for Achievement Center's Home Tour. The Delray Beach Concorde supports five nonprofits, which is completely aligned with our community values. As the second annual concourse, we are excited to sponsor this event and increase revenue for local businesses during a typical slower Father's Day weekend. This event has great economic potential impact and is not only free, but creates a fun, family-friendly event. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Angelita Gray, Angie Gray, 3765 Riverside Way. And I'm here this evening because I'm a former, one of former elected officials. I served for five years. I'm a current CRA board member and one of the board members that you are talking about getting rid of this afternoon. I have served on this board for the last five years, and by removing this board or removing the at-large members, you will be removing representation, you will be removing minorities, Blacks that's on the team. I heard Ms. Odom speak of, and I really like to pray for her because, you know, she's a preacher wife, she shouldn't have so much, I mean, preacher's daughter shouldn't have so much anger about what's going on. But I'm here today because there are five, you did remove the old independent CRA board. And with removing that, I had absolutely nothing to do with that. That was a city commission decision. I knew nothing about it, but we were replaced, and we did the work of what was promised for five years. This CRA had been in existence for over 30-something years, and they made a promise that they would develop, redevelop downtown, and then they would redevelop the area that created and made it possible to have a CRA in the first place, which was the northwest-southwest neighborhood and Osceola Park. For the last five years, with the input from the CRA, I mean, the city commissioners, we have done sidewalks, alleyways, we have addressed affordable housing, we have given grant dollars to businesses. We've done so much work that to get rid of the board right now would just be like, okay, I want to get rid of the board because I don't want representation. Five CRA, I mean, five city commissioners will be now in charge of, when we only have one Black, one person, Black person, one minority on the board, now you're going to be getting rid of three votes. That doesn't make sense to me or my community. We have been doing an amazing job. Please give me a reason why. You don't have to get rid of them. You can still have, make your promises and have an advisory board and still keep the board intact the way it is today. I think it's just a payback, but give me a good reason why, and you tried this last year. Give me a good reason why you want to get rid of a board, and you sat on the board also. And we've done some amazing things. And please tell me, other than the fact that you want to continue to take things back downtown, stop the dollars from coming to where they're supposed to be, or you have a whole nother agenda, but if you're going to get rid of us, please just remember that you're getting rid of the Black vote, and I'm sorry, if you all vote for that tonight, then that tells all of us, including everybody in my community, that you don't care about the Black vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Hello, Robert Cantwell, 1007 East Heritage Club Circle. I wanted to thank you for reconsidering the parking rate. I think that was a very positive move for the city. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I wrote to several of you, and I appreciate you responding to me. I think it was a little bit onerous to go to $4, but I think $3 is much more appropriate. Also want to thank you for sponsoring the Concourse de Elegance. I think that is a wonderful off-season event. I volunteered at the Concourse de Elegance in Boca, and it was phenomenally successful. So thank you so much for everything you do. I appreciate the direction you're taking.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Ramona Young, 101 South Federal Highway, Pointon Beach. I'm here on behalf of Angie Gray. I've known this young lady for the past 20 years. When I came to this area, she was among the first people that I met. I've watched her grow. I watched when she had a business and worked hard at that business in a beauty salon. I watched her grow more when she was elected and became an official here in Delray. And when I found out that you were trying to X her from the CRA, I thought, why? When you know that you love Delray. She loves Delray. She would do anything to make this a perfect town. I know that it has been America's city, and I think that she may have been on the board at that time when it became America's city. I know that she had some controversy, and I know she rose against that controversy because there was, it was a, in my opinion, political venue at that time, and on the outside, you can see a little bit better sometime than if you're in the mix. I'm here to say, don't do this. Keep her there. You need a conscience on the CRA. And if sometime that's controversial, that means you're doing the right thing. So I submit to you that, in all good conscience and in your faith, whatever that might be, that you think about this and what it will do to this city and to the African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Excuse me a second. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Ron Platt, and I live at 5120 Pine View Circle in Delray. That's in the Seagate at the Hamlet Community, a little west of Congress on south side of Atlantic. And I threw my hat in the ring about three weeks ago, submitting my application to the clerk for board membership on the DDA, and that's really what I'm here for right now, a little self-promotion. I guess I'm allowed to do that, right?
Good for you.
And I also sent my resume and the application to you folks as well. I'm applying for an at-large position on the board. I have businesses that are about two blocks outside of the district. That doesn't get me into the district, but I'm a city resident, so I'm applying for an at-large position. I have 40 years as a practicing real estate and general business attorney in Delray. I owned a large title insurance company and Platten Cerber PA law firm, as well as I owned, what I think, and I've been told, is the iconic Mellow Mushroom Restaurant. And I miss it dearly, and what can I do? I had a good run.
Yes, you did.
And... And I believe I have a varied business background, restaurant background, lawyer background, and I think I'd be a very good candidate for the DDA board. I think it'd be nice for them to have a lawyer on the board. I know they have their own lawyer, but I'd be at every meeting and, you know, can make my comments and so forth. And I love everything about the city of Delray, and I want to be an active participant, not just on the outside, but a little bit on the inside. My resume shows that I've been on the board of, I had been on the board of directors of a multi-billion dollar bank in the area for eight years. I'm currently on the board of the Old School Square Foundation, which is just a fundraising arm of the Old School Square. And I've been a big brother and big sister, well, you can know which one, the big brother for mentoring, mentoring a boy from Coral Springs for probably five years. And I applied only to the DDA, no other position. I really think it's a good fit for them and for me. I'm a retired attorney, but still an active member of the bar. I have plenty of time to serve. I understand the issues that come before the city, you know, the big one and the elephant in the room is the parking right now. I will be level-headed. I will be engaging. I will listen to both sides and make a decision. I kind of have a personal leaning, having owned a business right off the avenue. I'm just a little afraid of the increase of almost a 300 percent.
Yep.
But the horse is out of the barn, and I kind of agree with the mayor, but the horse is out of the barn, and
Understood.
I can live with that. Thank you very much. Thanks for consideration.
You did yourself a good job of selling yourself. Thank you, Mr. Platt.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheila Townsend. My address is 200 Northwest Fifth Avenue. I come before the board today to express my concern for the proposal to change the current structure of the CRA from the at-large board, voting members, to an advisory board. Under this current board, we have been able to see those residents in the northwest-southwest community, which generate the funds, the majority of the funds. We have been able to see the work that this board has been able to accomplish. Two housing projects, the Corey Isle Jones, as well as the CRA Beautiful Homes, to address affordable housing issue that we currently, everybody is having. We've been able to see alleyways, sidewalks, streetlights, basic infrastructure that should have been in place long before, but however, this board has been able to get it done. They have also built a business, a mixed business structure on Northwest Fifth Avenue that will encompass affordable residential as well as for small business owners who cannot afford the rent on Atlantic Avenue, a place where they can have an affordable office space. I think to remove those two voting blocks or those two voting members to go to an advisory council will do a disservice to the residents in the northwest-southwest community. So I'm asking to please hold it as it is, continue to allow this board to work and to bring what is their mission, to remove blight and slum from the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Carolyn Patton, 1020 Tamarind Road, Delray Beach. I'm here as a member of the Garden Club of America to urge you not to squander ten beautiful acres of green space at the golf course. As you well know, this is a built-out town where park and green space is very, very limited, and our comprehensive plan calls for the preservation and expansion of green But you have a viable alternative already, I feel, that to losing the green space wildlife and losing traffic control at the golf course. Our former mayor, Jay Alpern, has sent all of you an alternate plan that makes total sense to pay for the rehabilitation of the golf course. He suggests, and I know you all got this, initially, a utility bond which would serve to rehab the course and pay the course back for decades of use by the utility department. Secondly, release a million dollars currently earmarked for cart path repair. Thirdly, only minor repairs are needed at the clubhouse, and they should be paid for by Parks and Rec since the clubhouse is mainly used for community events by the community. I urge you to adopt this plan presented by Jay Alpern, or we can come up with an even better one, who served as mayor and commissioner in this town for ten years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I am Lori Vinicor, president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations, comprising more than 100 associations between the Everglades and the ocean, right here in Delray Beach, many of which are in the city. One other thing, I am president of the South County Mental Health Center, so thank you for making that. Remember, that's in our city, and it is the only not-for-profit left in Palm Beach County as a mental health center, so thank you for making this month that. But I am here today as the president of the alliance. The alliance supports our local communities who want to keep the historic land in the public domain, and that is the golf course. If you look at what the West Palm Beach had done just recently in the newspaper, they recently completed the renovation of their public golf course, and they're being applauded for it. It's a wonderful thing to do for the community. Looking at the county, the county, it has taken some time, but historic Peanut Island is being restored, which houses the Kennedy Bunker and historic Coast Guard House. It would have been a great resort. It would have been great to give it something to privatize it, but they kept it in the public trust, and it is something really to see, that everyone can enjoy. And we'd like this public golf course to be enjoyed by all. In the coming years, there'll be a lot of tax base coming in. The Aura over by Congress Avenue, the development at Swinton and Atlantic, Atlantic Crossing, this is going, they're all huge developments. There's going to be a lot of money coming in for this, so please make this golf course a labor of love. Keep it for the public. The land is precious, and there are surplus parcels in other parts of the city. This public parcel does not have to be disrupted. Further, the land is increasing in value all the time, so each day in itself, maintaining the public land is a terrific investment for the future. Please, please do not accept those proposals. Go and just take care of the golf course and go forth and repair what needs to be repaired, and it will be a wonderful investment for the future.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, mayor, my name is Chuck King. I live on
Is now joining.
And I am now joining you. Gotta love artificial intelligence, huh?
Your address, your address, sir?
It's Lozen Boulevard in Delray Beach, 2413. We're having some fun now. In a lot of ways, I don't envy you guys because many of these problems you're dealing with aren't your fault. For the last twenty years, we've listened to commissioners talk about, oh, this development's not going to hurt parking. This is, it's all going to park for itself. The traffic's going to be fine, and you're sitting, you're dealing with the parking issue right now. So I think anybody just objectively looking at it went, that's a crock. Of course it's going to add traffic. Of course it's going to add parking issues. And I think you're also figuring out that you've got a communication problem, and the least of which is that, as I was sitting here going through Facebook during one of the financial presentations, excuse my math, there's your Facebook post about what the new parking rates are going to be, came up on my feed, ending with a line, "Simple," when I guess it wasn't because you guys hadn't even decided that yet. So I would worry about the communication there and what John so eloquently brought up about how our communities were blindsided by not knowing about the traffic issues and things that were coming up. So there's some, I think, communication issues you might want to at least try to fix. I find it interesting, first off, there are a lot of people out here that are here for the golf course and are against the P3. I just wanted to ask those of you who weren't speaking, just to raise your hand, let these guys know how many people are here, because that's why you're here. You're against it.
Yeah.
So just, just, just to make sure, and let the stenographer put down everyone. I'm no crowd estimator, but it looked like 14,000. You've got a community that wants to help. Let's take it slow. If we're going to put this thing out, selling, selling the land should be a last resort. Put it out there, let's see what we can work on. Not, I'd like to reclaim my time. Sorry. Too much C-span. Let's see if we can work this thing out. If we're going to have to go out P3, I think it's odd that everybody has a different plan, and nobody's really bidding on the exact same thing. And I think maybe if you guys go out and say, this is what we want. We want a golf course. We don't need all the bells and whistles and the drive, the driving ranges and try to compete with other people. Let everybody get, if they're going to bid on stuff, be on the same footing. You get a better idea of what you're going to get. And remember that you're doing, like, think about the people that live here and not trying to attract more people to come to the city. That's a parking problem. That's a traffic problem. We found out that the, you know, the Palm Beach County Administrative Complex is talking about selling their stuff, some of their land, for more. You know, that's going to add a lot more traffic to that area of Congress in Atlantic that this would affect. Just remember, the people who live here live here for a reason.
Absolutely.
So we'll be with you if you help us out.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners, city manager, city attorney, Mavis Benson, 800 Greenswood Court. Difficult decisions don't happen, making difficult decisions don't, things don't happen overnight. And three years of research should not be dismissed in just one night. I want to give you a little history of the parking program. Parking rates were addressed as this, as is at this time, back to October of 2021. It involved meetings and conversations from the Commissioner, Parking Management Advisory Board, and the DDA. In fact, from October 26, 2021 to December 13, 2021, there were five total meetings at different times from these partners. At the December 13 DDA meeting, the Parking Board presented their proposal, their proposed thoughts to the DDA. There was not a meeting of the minds. Our city staff representative, Misty Barletta, recommended that the Parking Board and DDA Board have a joint meeting. It was agreed, and a meeting was set for June 25, January 25, 2022. Now, following November 8, 2021, DDA Board meeting, both merchants and beach property owners were contacted for their thoughts, either in person, by telephone, or email. The prospect of this proposed increase beachside caused overwhelming concern by the majority. At the joint meeting on January 25, between the DDA and the Parking Management Board, the DDA expressed their concerns for economic development and the impact that a significant increase in parking rates could have on businesses in the beachside area. After conversations and concerns were shared from both organizations, the DDA proposed a motion to approve $2.50 an hour on A1A and Atlantic Avenue and $2.00 an hour for the beach parking lots. It was unanimously approved by the five DDA board members in attendance, and the same motion was made by the Parking Management Board and was approved three to one. You may or may not remember that even before this, on February 3, 2020, the Parking and Curbside Management had their kickoff meeting for the master plan study. Members of the DDA and Parking Management Board, city partners, and the public participated in this study. After three years of meeting, surveys, and discussions, we have the approved curbside management plan. As a DDA board member, I can assure you that through all of this, we have workshopped, analyzed, listened, and determined what direction to provide as constituent input to the city commission to help you in your decisions. The common goal for all partners is parking management. It should be implemented in a manner to make it simple to understand, navigate, and wow, that went fast. I guess I speak too slowly. My big ask is this right now. I heard us tonight. We've got ideas. We've got a workshop coming up. We've got a new parking, chief facilitator, thank you, it wasn't coming. We've got a plan for merchant employee, employee parking. All of these things, if we work together, I think we can make good decisions for the community at large.
Thank you, Mavis.
If we could push it off until the fall, let the merchants get through season, and then look at doing whatever we need to do.
All right. Thank you, Mavis.
That's the big ask. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Philapone. I reside at 2000 South Ocean Boulevard in Delray. I'm the Community Impact Manager for Achievement Center for Children and Families. I am here for two reasons. First of all, ACCF Achievement Centers is very proud of our community partnerships and collaborations. We are very excited to support the Get Your Green On program and Kenya Madison, I think she left, but all her amazing work. We are so pleased that you are acknowledging the importance of mental health awareness. It couldn't, I think everyone knows how important that is these days. The other reason I'm here is on behalf of the Delray Beach Concours. The Achievement Center is one of the five nonprofits benefiting from the concours in June, and I think you heard Max Zengage and Nicole Grimes, a few other people, talk about the importance of the event. It's a free community event that will bring classic cars and hundreds of spectators to downtown Delray Beach, which will promote local businesses and industry in the off-season. So I just want to thank you for your support of both the Get Your Green On and the Delray Beach Concours. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alex Wolf, and I live at 1234 Southwest 22nd Avenue in Delray. I'm here representing myself and my neighbors of Rainbow Homes. I'm here to oppose your 8A, which is the rezoning of 1155 South Congress Avenue, to allow 267 units.
Mayor, that's quasi judicial. That's quasi judicial, yeah. That's the 8A and 8A1 has to be, you have to wait when we get to that. We're going to allow you to come up and speak about it.
Thank you.
Specifically. Thank you. Anybody else that's doing 8A1, A, please hold your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Ridley. I live at 210 Northwest Second Avenue, Delray Beach. Lived here over 45 years. I, first of all, I want to say thank you to Pompeii Park staff, who did an excellent job on Saturday with the kids who was doing their prom. I didn't see any commissioners out there to clap their hands and say, "How wonderful job." So it proved to me some black children are graduating from high school, so grateful for that. The second question is that what does the city of Delray do for homeless? I don't know. I would love to hear what are you doing about homeless in Delray and give me an answer as well. The third thing is I just heard someone spoke how great the CRA is, and they need to, some of the members need to continue to sit there. Well, I've been here 45 years, and over the last eight years, I have not seen anything done in my set community. Everything I've heard has been very negative, not supportive. So whatever you're doing, I hope to see some great work since they asking for this set community, which they've done so much, the northwest and southwest section, that they just need all this great help, and some of us need prayer, so continue to pray for me as well, because I know I need it too, but since they're up here begging and asking for us to help them, since they're African-Americans to do that. So I pray for them African-Americans that whatever happened, happened, and it's in God's words. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. Commissioner Burns, Mayor Petolia, Hall of Commissioner. My name is Vicky Brooks, 202 Southwest 15th Avenue, Delray Beach, Florida. I am Commissioner Kelsey Brooks's wife. And first and foremost, since Angie Gray did bring this up in regards to a preacher's daughter with Ms. Odom, I came here to speak to you all as a preacher's wife. Okay? First off, I could not disagree with removing Kelsey Brooks, my husband, and Angie Gray from the current CRA board. If you can recall, back in 2017, we had the same scenario, and Ms. Gray did make deals with certain officials. I won't call any names that I've heard about, but we all remember 2017 where she had all at least four minority members removed. Okay? And if I'm wrong, can someone please correct me on that?
You're wrong. I was not. Let's just make your comments to us and
Anyway. Anyway. Anyway, as a preacher's wife, I'm letting you know, I'm praying for everybody involved in this, because there's been a whole bunch of shady dealings for the last, I'd say at least five years, when Angie Gray approached my husband in 2018. And this is why I associated myself from the current CRA Board, that sits now with the exception of Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Long. But the previous members, I disassociated myself with that. And also, my husband has not lived in the City of Delray Beach since August 2 of 2022. His address is 3375 North Ocean Park Boulevard in Boynton Beach, Florida. He doesn't own any property here, nor does he have a business here. With that being said, may God bless all of you involved in this, and let's try to keep it clean from here on out.
Thank you. Yes, Miss Ma'am.
Andrea Bruton, 703 Place Devant, Delray Beach, Florida. Again, I stand before you in this uniform. However, I'm speaking as a resident. I can't wait till October until the meetings change back to 5:00 PM, so I'll have time to go home and change. And I won't have to leave work early to get here. I heard something earlier that kind of sparked me, and contrary to what you've been told about what the CRA has done, and the two black members that were on there, there was four in 2017 and 2018, when the current Commissioner mission took over. There were four. They were an award-winning CRA Board. You all collected the award for them when you took over the Board in 2018. Now, the claims are being made that this current CRA Board did the alleyways, the affordable housing, and the sidewalks. Okay? That was already in place, and if you look at the project numbers, the project numbers start with the year that they were budgeted for. The project numbers were 2017. This current Commission just got, you took over the Board in 2018. So there was no way you could have done all of that work, as you're claiming. That work was done by the independent CRA Board. Let's be transparent. Let's be transparent and stop saying, stop claiming work that you've done, and knowing that you have, you implemented it, but the work was already done. So I'm asking you to, I support this Advisory Board and the current, and just the City Commission. From my understanding, the City of Delray is the only city in Palm Beach County that has those two civilian seats available. I'm asking that you take them away, do the Advisory Board, and let's move forward, because this current CRA hadn't really done anything for my neighborhood, in which I was born and raised, in the last five years. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. My name is Jim Chard, and I live at 401 Southeast 4th Avenue. And I'm here to invite all of you to the ninth annual six-by-six exhibition and sale that is being put on by the Old School Square Center for the Arts. We're calling it the Square Off the Square, because for our first time in our existence, we are in another location. It's on May 12. It's from 6 to 9. More than 400 pieces of work are on the walls right now. Over, probably around 200 artists. And I have to say, from a personal point of view, having these artists come in and say, they haven't been able to display their art for two years, and how important this is to them, and how important the courses were, it's very, very touching. So we, of course, are not quite used to having to do all of the paperwork and the permits and so forth, that evidently are required when you're doing something on Congress. So I've been working very closely with city staff, and hopefully, all of the paperwork will be cleared, and you can be there and enjoy a very wonderful evening with some beautiful, beautiful art, all of which, by the way, sells for $35 apiece. The idea is that you're not only helping the artists, you are helping wannabe collectors for $35 apiece. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Well, well, well.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Ms. Jellin, Mr. Moore, and lovers of Delray Beach. Good evening. I am Shirley Irving Johnson. I live at 701 Northwest 4th Street, Delray Beach. As a retired Delray Beach citizen and community activist, I wish to speak to item number 10B. Whatever direction you choose, I wish you the best in meeting the needs of the CRA districts. That's what's most important. Whatever we have done before, if it's working, in your opinion, great. If it's not, you're gonna do and choose whatever you do and whatever you choose. I wish to thank the volunteers who have served without compensation or consideration since 2018. Commissioner Angie Gray, Commissioner Pamela Brinson, and Commissioner Pastor Kelsey Brooks. I ask the citizens to join me in thanking each of these citizens for everything, countless hours of discussion, ideas, and sacrifice, and great advice to the Commission. I heard that an advisory committee would be established. I pray that whoever you appoint will have the same objectives in meeting the long pent-up needs of all the CRA districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. Reggie Cox, 715 MLK Drive, Delray Beach. I just love these formalities. We get formalities, we get public comments, so we might as well take our time and use them. The item 10B, independent CRA Board discussion, I think it's time to reverse and make right what was done out of retribution. Okay? All the volunteers on all the boards, none of them get paid, so that's just the way it is. There's nothing, there's nothing new and improved about that. The independent CRA Board was eliminated, and since that time, the great debate has been what was completed and what was done. Everybody knows, like one of the other speakers said, those projects and what was set in place. And it took years to set that stuff in place. It doesn't happen overnight. If you know the project cycle, particularly infrastructure projects, you know they're not done overnight. And I guess the Commission Board found that out, because there's no development on West Atlantic Avenue in the last five years. As a matter of fact, it's a lawsuit. So the great experience, the great experiment did not work. Essentially, it backfired, because there's no development on West Atlantic Avenue in the last five years, and there's a lawsuit because of the developer you picked. So you need to right a wrong. Everybody knows it. Okay? The voters have spoken loud and clear. There's representation from the black community, all over the black community, the elders table, the neighborhood lines, the Coalition. I mean, I can go on and on, and they do great work in housing, they do great work in education, great work in community organizing. There's a legacy in this community for organizing, so we don't need to play that game about representation. And you didn't think about representation, some of you, when you eliminated the independent C-Board that had four black professionals. So let's not play the black game. Okay? What we need to do is get in the correct structure. The attorney has spoken. And not play games, let's get this reversed on this particular item, and then we can go on with more items that we need to reverse, that was done out of retribution and under handle. We want to return to civility. Everybody knows it. The voter spoke overwhelmingly, and, you know, let's just go with what the voter said this time. Okay? Plain and simple, no games. We gotta go through these formalities, because we got a commission, we got meetings, we gotta have them, you know? So we gotta go through the song and dance. But let's right this wrong, and let's just get it done. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. I mean, good afternoon. Sorry about that. Good afternoon. Isn't that funny? Mayor, Commissioners, Terrence, how are you? My name's Barry Fretti. I live on the golf course, 717 Golf Court. Can you guess what I want to talk about?
No.
You know, I'm a Miami guy. I moved to Broward because of traffic, and that's a true story. I was in traffic one day, and I couldn't handle it. And I just said, "I'm done with this." I moved to Broward, and then 10 years ago, I was done with that. And I moved to Palm Beach, and I bought a place on the golf course. And I really enjoy it. It's beautiful, and I don't play golf there. And I play golf Osprey Park Ridge. They're beautiful. I mean, the grass is beautiful, the greens are beautiful. Everything is beautiful about those courses. I play Delray, and it's the last time I play. I just say, "I can't do this anymore." And that's what's happening. People don't want to play the course. $200,000 a month, I believe, is what that thing brings in. What are we doing with it? Because it's the worst golf course I've ever played in my entire life. Okay? And I'm not kidding. I play a lot of golf. It's just awful. So I can't see having gridlock again in my life. And this is a personal thing. I can't see, already during season, you know, I'm waiting sometimes five, six, seven minutes just to make a right on Atlantic, and there's no dedicated turn lane there. I mean, what, I mean, and also on Congress, yep, and on Homewood and making a right on Atlantic. And there's no dedicated turn lane when you're approaching, on Linton, approaching Homewood, making a right. So if someone's there, you're waiting five minutes to make a right. I just can't see how 600 units going up there is gonna be okay for the people in this community. That's why we're voicing our opinions. A beautifully updated golf course and clubhouse with all the green space, the amazing birds, everybody happy, and just the most beautiful golf course in Palm Beach County is really what we want, right? I would imagine. So with that in mind, please take into consideration traffic studies, because there's gonna be a lot of unhappy people. I really can't handle traffic. I have some anxiety issues. I can't handle it. I'll be moving north, and I'm probably, you know, I, that's just, those are my thoughts. And of course, it's not "good morning." I was trying to think about what I wanted to say. But you guys have been very helpful in bringing this, you know, to the, to the city, to the residents, and I'm grateful for that, and we all are too, and all the work that you've done. But selling off land that we possibly could never get back, there's gotta be another way. And that's what everybody is voicing their opinions here for, is because there is another way, and we just ask that you just listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. It's 5:59, so we're at the one-hour mark. Okay, so we have one person in the queue? Two. Okay, that's it. We're cutting it off. Those two. Yes, sir.
Michael Wendell, Ray Beach. First, I'd like just to say thank you for the police department. They're doing phenomenal job due to what's happening today, that we have peace, that we can go out. And the police chief, I never seen anybody work as hard as this guy. He even does scheduling. Now, the main thing that I want to talk about is education, and for the children that finishing school now, that cannot get a job anyways. And we're having programs for the children for the summer. Nothing's gonna happen with these programs, because those teachers that's been teaching these kids for 10 years, they haven't taught them nothing, they're not gonna teach them nothing in the next three months. That's just money that you're gonna give to them. These kids, they need jobs with, that they can learn a skill, a profession, a carpenter, a plumber, electrician. We need to find, figure out a way to get these kids jobs with these people. Otherwise, we're gonna have a problem, because these kids, they had lunches for free, now they're hungry. It's the worst thing in life. If you're young and you're hungry, you're willing to do anything to get food. Your mind does not work properly. So that's what we need. So I wish you all best. Have a wonderful weekend, and I'm going to sleep now.
All right, thank you.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Chuck Ridley. I have the privilege of living at 210 Northwest 2nd Avenue. It is my understanding that there will be a conversation regarding the composition of our current CRA, that is a hybrid of city commissioners and two alternates that has voting authority. I would like to suggest that this Commission moves from the five-member board with the two alternates to a five-member board, and that you set up an advisory committee. My rationale is that if, by doing it that way, you allow yourself to have more voices that can talk about a variety of different and important issues in our community. It is clear by state statute that you will be sunsetting. Don't know how long. I'm told anywhere from 15 to 25 years. Who knows if we will have a state of Florida in 15 to 25 years? Assuming we do, let's maximize the amount of voices that could be on this body. The independent CRA Board, I had a privilege of serving, and I supported that. I am troubled that that is no longer a viable option. I also suspect that if, that the current model that you have is probably flawed. I heard you say something at the last Commission meeting, and, which was, your question was, was the other two with vote possible? I don't know. But I know that you don't usually ask questions, Commissioners of Frankel. And when you did, I went to asking questions. And I haven't gotten a real good definitive answer. If five Commissioners are voting, and two non-elected persons can vote as though they are Commissioners, something about that just does not seem right. Don't mind the voice. I have a problem with the vote. Then, if we're gonna move where those two alternates don't have a vote, I would like to have more of a voice. And so that is why I'm asking you to consider. Five Commissioners, you all made the precedent, you wanted the Commissioners to be the voting body. And how you did it, you ran for election. Got elected. Good for you. Now, everyone else need to be in advisory capacity. Consider moving it to five Commissioners with an alternate. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you. Okay, very good. At this point, public comment is over, and we're gonna move on to the consent agenda as amended, being a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Call the roll, please. Mr. Bulston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, so the first item that we have is, what was 7F, is moved to be 7AA, and that is a discussion of the private-public partnership for development on the municipal golf course. Ms. Sarah Maxfield will be leading the discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We are here once again, as you know, to discuss moving forward, or what our options would be moving forward with the golf course redevelopment project. We have our team from CBRE here to guide us in that conversation. LeAnn Corst and Matt Kazaya, and then we have the rest of the team joining by teams if they need to be polled subject matter experts. So I'm gonna toss it over to LeAnn and let her lead this discussion.
Very good.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for asking the CBRE team to return and present a few slides on the golf course project. We have had an opportunity to meet individually with the two new Commissioners and go through the full presentation deck that you all have previously seen and heard us present. So I'll be relatively brief today, because I know you have a lot to think about and discuss. So the discussion regarding the golf course improvements have obviously been going on for a number of years. This timeline, however, begins with the thought of a P3 and subsequent discussions, hiring CBRE in April of last year. It includes significant project milestones, such as meeting with the golf course user groups in April of last year, or I'm sorry, in June of 2022, releasing the RFP, the submittals received. And of note is the opportunity we've highlighted in orange to, for the community to hear and/or participate in 10 different public meetings. So with that, this slide is a refresher of the four offerings and a high-level overview of what they're proposing. All of the teams are qualified and um have similar components and slightly different components. In common, they all include 18-hole championship course, which you all um indicated was important, uh hence eliminating two of the previous proposals that were more of a non-traditional golf course approach. And they um all, well, two plan to renovate the existing clubhouse and two plan to um build new. Uh all but one provided great information on the practice areas. All but one restore all of the nine holes of the Donald Ross course and one proposed uh renovation of seven, seven out of nine holes. Um on the commercial, on the uh, the right-hand side is the commercial development and it ranges from 312 units on the low end to 650 multifamily units on the high end. All of the proposals include restaurant space and the non-golf acreage or private acreage ranges from seven to 10 acres. So this slide really outlines some of the options that you all have to consider going forward. And on the left-hand side, um we outline and, and we develop these in collaboration with city staff, but on the left-hand side, we list out um the first one, which has always been on the table. The city could fund upgrades. But to do so, we think it's best to lay some groundwork by completing a rate study as well as a master plan that could be funded through increased rate revenue. So in order to really contemplate a full redevelopment of the golf course and the improvements that are needed, would recommend a, a full study be done on that. Um secondly, the, the city could go ahead and fund what it can through existing revenue and what you can afford to do. Um and then lastly, we outlined the uh, the P3 option, which is the result of the competitive process that's previously been discussed. So if you move forward with a P3, um we, we would request or we would recommend a, a request for best and final offers. And doing so really just improves the offering back to the city and what your priorities are. So one of the things that we thought about was refining some of the project improvements. You've heard some variations in the proposals. We put out um some specifications in the RFP to try and encourage responses that were in alignment with what we heard you all, the elected officials and the public uh specify were important back in June, uh April to June of last year. However, uh you might want to consider simply asking the firms for best and final offers or providing them with some parameters on um on project refinements. So for example, we've listed out the location of the clubhouse. Do you prefer it on um Atlantic or Highland? Do you prefer new or renovated? On the private development side, would you want to uh specify a maximum number of units or a maximum height? Or a maximum amount of acreage, for example? So those are things that you all might want to consider if you choose to go through a best and final offer um process. So with that, I'll conclude and turn it over to y'all for discussion and, and interaction. We're happy to answer questions, of course.
Very good. Start on this end? Or wherever? Yes, go right ahead.
I'm happy. I'm happy to jump, jump in. Um so uh I know some of you probably already know where I'm going with this because um you sent me a lot of emails. And I, I actually replied to every single one of them prior to this meeting. But I, you know what, I really think it's, I really think it's important and you've probably heard me say this before in some of the, in some of the meetings or if you've had personal conversations with me. I just think it's really important to know um, you know, how we, how we got here. And um, and that was a few years ago in, in an annual budget meeting where we're talking about all the infrastructure needs in our city um that we're tasked with finding a way to address. Water treatment plant, police department, fire department, new city hall, community center, sea level rise. Um those recommendations by, by the way, on the sea level rise are close to $400 million that we have to find. So you put all that together, you're close to a billion dollars. And we need to find a way to do it all for you and for us. We're also taxpayers. We put forward an idea for the golf course um that was innovative in earnest um because we thought we could leverage the private sector market and take the burden off the taxpayers to give you what you wanted, which was a championship golf course, which all these proposals have. Now we've heard. And I really appreciate anyone that's reached out and also not only said, hey, this isn't what we want, but also said, I'm putting my hand up to help. Uh Mayor Alprin, I believe your letter was referenced earlier. Um so finally, I found something for you to do. That's good. You know, I just, listen, the, the thing about being innovative, and I think you all want a city that's innovative, is that you have to be willing to pivot and sometimes you gotta be willing to fail. There's no being innovative without failing. We were very successful in going out and doing the proper studies for revenue bond um to fund our water treatment plant, which is well on its way. We were successful, thank you to you, the voters, on our two GO bonds, which will be addressing the fire department and the police station and a lot of park improvements. We're not bad, but we can't expect about a thousand. So I hear you. Two subjects has been brought up tonight. Um you know, I, I did not vote for the takeover of the CRA or the termination of OSS and it's because the residents spoke very loudly. Um I'm going to listen tonight as well to the residents. I will be moving to reject all of the proposals. I did have an opportunity last meeting to be the deciding vote for two of those proposals to move forward. And I didn't feel, one, with the community asking so many questions at the time or having very strong opinions, that moving forward on such a big decision with a 3-2 vote did not sound, did not feel right to me. So I had a lot of conversations, made sure to answer all of the questions, and there was individuals out there that had misinformation, thinking we were, you know, selling the entire golf course. And then once I explained to them that it really was only 5% of the golf course and this is why we were doing it, their answer was still no. That they still didn't want to move forward with it. So at least I got over the misinformation hurdle and we had that conversation. So what I'd like to say is stick with us. This has been, we have been discussing this for the last few years and the engagement wasn't there and certainly some of that is on our fault for sure. All right, in regards to communication with the residents. But now it's team effort, right? We were trying to check this off the box and take this path, which was kind of a, the faster path, right? Because it's not only did we not have to come up with the funds, but also remember, we can only do so much from a capacity standpoint and both of those things were gonna be addressed with this path. That's okay. We're not gonna take that path. But now we need your help. And I appreciate everybody that has put up their hand to be part of the solution as we move forward because and I mentioned this to Mayor Alprin. What that letter reminded me of is why I got involved in Delray Beach. The stories of the community coming forward and saying, don't widen Atlantic Avenue, save our downtown. The stories of people coming together saying, save Old School Square and turn it into a cultural arts center. That's why I got involved when I moved to Delray. I thought, I, I have to give back. Um this reminded me of that. Your letter reminded me of that. Um so I'm excited to move forward. I apologize to staff. I apologize to CBRE and, and the applicants because I know a lot of time and funds um were, were utilized uh for this process. But at the end of the day, I have to, I have to listen to the residents. And like I said, I will be, I will be making a motion once all my colleagues speak um to reject all four proposals.
Well, I hope we don't have a psychic or somebody that's breaching sunshine because you can't say that we are not going forward and that's what you just said, until we actually all speak. And I'm not saying that we're not, not going forward, but I just want to make sure that you're making, making it clear that you, you don't know what's gonna happen at this board.
I, I just said I'll be, I'll be making.
I know. Okay, anyway, go back and listen, but I'm just saying that it just sounded like you basically said we're not gonna be moving forward on this.
Well, in, in, Mayor, in our last meeting, two of my colleagues said that they were not for moving forward. They ran against this entire concept. So I am the third vote, so it's just like kinda easy math.
You got it. All right.
No, because it's just the accusation that you were making there is pretty serious.
I'm not making, you know, I just think that you can't, you can't do that on a board. You can't pre-tell everybody what everybody is going to be doing. That's all. That's what I'm just saying. It's not, it's not okay. So I, I get it. I get it. You're, you're taking that and that's fine. Let's go, move on. Go ahead. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank staff as well and the CRB board. Um I saw the presentation. It was very compelling, uh very well put together and I appreciate it. Um you know, unfortunately, lots of time and money was put into that, but I appreciate it. But you know, as, as I said during my campaign, I support the residents. Um I received your emails. Thank you so much. I did not respond to all of them, but I've spoken to many of you. Um you have spoken boldly and loudly about your wishes and I, I support the residents.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh well, Mr. Boylston was, has always been clear in, in his position. I voted for one of the proposals. I thought it'd be in the best interest of the city because this isn't a new issue. Back in June of 2018, this was an issue. Maybe Mayor Alprin was here then. But I didn't see a majority of you guys here. And I appreciate you guys coming now and I appreciate the emails. And for the record, when I met with CBRE, I said, don't talk to me, talk to Mayor Alprin because he knows more about the golf course than I did. Did I not? Okay, well, I did say that. So yeah, I I think for many years, at least I can document to, to June of 2018, there's been requests particularly by the Women's Golf League there for improvements. And Mitzi Kates, who I have emails back on the server that I found and some other uh female players from this league, were begging us then. We didn't have the money then and then COVID hit and now we're here. I'm gonna be joining my two colleagues that spoke. However, I gotta thank CBRE and I gotta thank the proposals. It's a bad look to do this and not go forward. And I'm not saying it's a bad look not to listen to you all folks and the people that emailed and, and the people that communicated to us. I just wish we would have heard a louder voice sooner. That's all. And, and I'm not, guess what? I'm not gonna argue about the communications. I know we've had 10 meetings. We're not perfect in that area, but we heard you now. So I'll be joining my two colleagues over here. And hopefully, we can get together a plan because certainly municipal golf course needs improvements and it's a beautiful Donald Ross course. However, we just passed a great deal of taxes to our homeowners for parks and our first responders.
Is now exiting.
I guess they just have.
I think they got the message.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's the worry.
Yes, but uh I appreciate you all sticking with us. I appreciate those that spoke. I appreciate those that emailed, but I, I'll be joining my two colleagues that spoke.
Thank you, thank you. Um Deputy Vice Mayor.
I mean, there's, there's not much left for me to say that my, my colleagues haven't said already. Um I haven't been part of this process to get us to this point, but I would like to, to thank staff and CBRE and all the applicants who submitted. Um I know an incredible amount of work went into this and there were some really great proposals in that. Um but I don't feel that they are the right fit for Delray Beach and I'd like to commend my colleagues for being responsive to residents. I think that's crucial, that we are responsive, responsive to the needs of our residents. And by the way, for those of you I haven't responded to via email yet, I will get back to you. I'm still trying to figure out how to manage this, this new workload.
Oh, boy.
I'll get there. Um but I, I will be voting along with my colleagues who have spoken to reject our four of the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, there's a couple of things that I want to bring up. Number one, um the West Palm Beach course, there was a huge, huge anonymous donor that made a tremendous, uh put a tremendous amount of money towards that course. So we don't have that, you know, opportunity. We don't have, nobody's come forward. Let's just put it that way yet. We'll, we'll accept it, but um if anybody'd like to. But uh that made a huge difference in the West Palm Beach uh situation and, and why they're celebrating and we're kinda still here. Um as long as I have been elected, this course has been in need of, of maintenance. If you could be so kind as to just give us a moment. We've listened to everybody here and we're, it's our time to speak. We're just trying to make sure that you get, get the message from us. Um it has been a course that has been near and dear to my heart to try to change and make better. Um I agree with my colleague, uh the Vice Mayor, who basically said we got to a point where this was probably out of all of the, the possibilities for a PPP project, this would have been the one that would have met the criteria uh best for that. Um obviously, what we got back was not uh acceptable to the majority of people who are in this um, in this room and have written to us. There have not been a tremendous amount of uh support otherwise. So you know, we have to uh understand that that's, that is really where the, the, the voice of the, of the community is coming from. It's from people like you that are expressing your, your disinterest in this. Um one of the things I also want to mention to you is that we did have money in our, um on our, uh, in a past uh time, I don't remember what the date was, but there was over three mil, $3 million that was slated to change that course and to fix it up. And then what was delivered to the commission at that time, because I was sitting on the commission, I'm not sure who, who up here, I know that two of my members were not, but might have been, the other two might have been here. Um that it was told to us that we could not move forward with that $3 million of renovation because of all the understructure that would have to be changed. And that was going to run in the $12 million range. So that blew the budget right then and there. There was nothing that we could do, so the money ended up going someplace else. Now, I have also learned in this process that um those pipes, those uh connections or uh, I would call them um, I don't know, uh mains and uh uh wells are not at their life's end. We have at least probably a decade left. The only reason why we were going to do them was because of all the work that was gonna be done on top. And I would tell you that depending on what we end up doing here, maybe, maybe we wouldn't have to do those and that would actually save some money and get us to that point a little quicker. That's what I would hope for, that we could look at that a little deeper. And also that one, this would make a perfect um opportunity to reinstate charrettes. We had charrettes in the past where the public came out, expressed their concerns, gave their opinions. We were able to gather a lot of information all at once in a very productive and civil manner. Um and I think that we should probably ask the city to reintroduce the charrettes. I also want to say that there were a couple of things that had were brought up. Utility bonds being one, in a way to being able to pay back. I don't think that that's possible and I, um the city attorney and I have spoken about that. And um I'm not sure that that actually is a, a way that we can actually do this. And you can speak to that to us on a, at a different time um as a potential. Um if there is a million dollars in cart repair, uh you know, in a, in a fund for cart path repair, why shouldn't we use that? Obviously, we should probably you know, add that in and try and get this thing to the starting line quicker than not. Because my biggest fear is that we say no to this and then we do nothing about it for another five years. I, I, I mean, I just, I, I watched this happen for 10 years sitting here now. And I just have to tell you, it's very troubling to me to get to this point and, and not do anything. And then um the only other thing that I just wanted to mention is that the person who came up and said that he golfs in a lot of different areas and, and this is the absolute worst course that he's ever golfed on, I, I have to tell you, I've, I've been out there and I can't necessarily disagree. And that is a shame for our city to have that as our course. So you have to understand that when you have elected officials that are trying to get to the point where we can satisfy our city and deliver something back, we're gonna try whatever it takes. This obviously isn't something that is um acceptable to our citizens, so we're gonna ask you guys to maybe join us in some, maybe charrettes and figure out how do we get from point A to point B quicker and not having this, you know, just take an extraordinary amount of time because again, it gets away from us and we still are faced with the same thing that we've been faced with, with, for the last decade. So I think that you have, I, I, we have to, I probably make a, a vote.
So the um, the solicitation does allow the city um to cancel the solicitation and reject all proposals. So that, I think the motion should say that um you're moving to reject all proposals and cancel the solicitation so that it's completely.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Motion to reject all proposals and cancel the solicitation for the redevelopment of the Delray Beach Municipal Golf Course.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Boylston.
Yes.
Unanimous. Now, for whoever is only here for that and wants to leave, this would be a perfect time. We'll give you a couple seconds so that we can continue. Thank you all for coming in. Okay, if you can move everything out to the lobby, that'd be great. All right. Back to the core. Okay, so we are now at item 7BB, which was an item I pulled, and this is resolution number 83-23. Originally was on the agenda as 6G. I just had a question because I, I don't know, I, I didn't know if we actually went through a bid process on this, and in the event that we did, because this is for about $75,000, what this actually is? I know that it's about our beaches, and we have to do, is this a requirement? And if so, how did we get to the point where it's ATM again? Because that was one of the, that was one of the consulting companies we've used in the past. But I didn't know if we had a contract with them that continued or what. You tell me. Nope. Did you, did somebody turn that off now?
No.
All right, go, come right up here. Yep. It's almost like they shut them down.
Good evening, Missy Barletto, Public Works Director, again. The contract with Aptum was, was solicited and chosen several years ago. It's gone through a number of different renewals over the years. This, this engineering firm provides the, the surveys of the post-beach nourishments. We are required to do a pre and post survey every year of, of the beach contour to, that gives us the information that we provide to the state and to the federal government that informs when our next renourishment will be scheduled.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that we had gone down the right path on that one because of the fact that I just didn't, I wasn't aware. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, they do, they have done this work every single year since I've been here.
Gotcha. I just, again, just making sure that I understood it. I'm good with it. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Boylston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
All right, we are on our regular agenda, item 7A, and this is a resolution 78-23 with respect to our bungalow, historical bundle, bungalow and window repairs at the historic Kason Cottage. Missy Barletto.
Missy Barletto, again, Public Works Director. I have a very short presentation. We have several proposed repairs for, to repair the structural floor system under the, the Kason Cottage to stabilize and correct those deficiencies, to replace three windows on the north face of the building that are leaking and have caused some, some issues with wood rot. The, we are proposing using a Sourcewell contract for this work. Again, this is a conversation that you had earlier in the evening. It's a national cooperative purchasing source solution. It is competitively bid, except for it is not competitively bid by the City of Delray Beach. We are taking advantage of a bid process that, that others have done. These kinds of contracts provide, they're in indefinite quantity, indefinite time. They provide a list of, of costs for each thing so that those are set a couple of years in advance, maybe of when we're actually going to utilize the contract. With the way that market values have changed over the past few years, we actually realize a savings by going through the job order contracting system for, for our processes. The repair costs that we're looking at for, for the historical society currently, $156,462 for the foundation repair and the new floor, and then $7,500 for the window and the, the new wall. The total cost of this con, of this contract would be $163,962. The actual construction company that will be utilizing to do this work is Shift Construction. They have historic property renovation experience in Pompano Beach. They, the rather large brick house in the photograph, they actually moved that from one location to another, did a restoration and, so, on its new site, and then restored the house. And they also have done the complete renovation of the Blanche Eli House in Pompano Beach that serves as a cultural heritage museum. And that's all the information I have for you on this, on this this evening.
Very good. Any questions going down? No? I, I did have a couple of questions. I just wanted to understand. Okay, so the last meeting that we were in, there was really, I mean, before that, there was really no movement on this. And then all of a sudden, we're now facing what was apparently decided on even last year for Shift. Shift was made a contractor late last year. Why was there, and I don't know if I should be asking you or Mr. Moore, why was there a gap from January until May?
When, when we had the conversation with commission about the, the renovations to the Crest Theater Building, commission expressed a great deal of concern over our dependence on the job order contracting process and utilization of the Sourcewell contracts. In the end, you, you had directed us to seek other methods. And, and we looked at sending this out to bid. It didn't, honestly, it didn't. This is exactly the kind of project that the job order contracting is, is best suited to handle because of the cost savings from the, the price list that we have in advance. And the, there's a wide array of contractors that we can work with to make sure that we can get things done in a timely manner.
Okay, and then I also was made aware of a comment to the board. I'm talking about the historic, the Historical Society Board, that the reason that we were not moving forward was because there was a grant that the city commission had decided not to go forward with that eliminated the $200,000 line item or something to that effect. Are you aware of that? Are you aware of that?
I am not.
I, we did put in a legislative appropriation request.
Which is separate and apart from this particular consideration. So on that note.
But one didn't have anything to do with the other, correct?
No, it did not. This was in the budget for this year and has remained in the budget for this year.
All right, very good. Thank you. Those are the questions that I had, so I'll take, if nobody has any others, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number 78-23.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Boylston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes. All right, moving on to an appointment of an elected official to serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We talked about that. We thought, I thought that there was a one already, we already have you. Aren't you on that board?
Well.
You can't have two, right?
Right. Ms., Ms. Burns was on the board until she was elected.
Right.
And now she's off. So I asked, I asked Mr. Moore, I've now been on it for almost three years. And I think this would be a good time to.
You're going to step down?
I'm going to step down, and then I would like to move the name Commissioner Burns.
Second.
Call the roll. Any, any questions? Call the roll.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. I think it's really important for that, you know, continuation because we have other things going on that board.
Absolutely.
Made sense.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Boylston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
All right, moving on to seven.
So we'll be bringing back this now to a point in our vacant position that Commissioner Burns needs.
Right.
So that, that should be on your next agenda.
Okay, gotcha. And does somebody select who selects it? Whether, it will be rotating or?
It'll be a rotation. Who's ever up.
Okay, very good. All right, 7C, request from this Delray Concourse Foundation for a city sponsorship in the amount of 18, I think it was, I read at 18,000 and change.
18,750.
Thank you.
Doesn't it? Nope.
Yeah, there it is. Press the button when all those fails.
Good evening again. Jeff Horace, Assistant City Manager. The item before you is a request from the Delray Concourse Foundation for City Sponsorship of the Delray Concourse DeElegance Event that is scheduled to be held on June 17th, 2023, on the Old School Square campus. There's been some discussion about what sponsorship means. I would ask you for any feedback you have on how you would like to hear items like this in the future. This is the first time we are presenting this to you in the modern times. What I, what you have in your backup material is just some information, including the special event permit, as well as a site plan on what the, the promoter intends to do there. What he has basically asked for is 100% waiver of all city fees for the event. We have given you an, an amount that he's asked for that would cover everything. There are some items that are still under consideration. It's really more about just trying to decide exactly or discuss what is the promoter's responsibility that he does not feel is, is something he needs to do and what we have done as practice with several different things. We're trying to just square that out. The figure that was brought forward of 18,878, excuse me, $18,750 would cover all of the anticipated costs, no matter what exactly we come up with. This is, again, the first of this kind. I, I, please, if there's other information you may want to know, please let me know. Of what, and just for your information, we will try to create a standardized form in the future with information on it to make this particular part of the, the job a little easier for you.
I, I have a question because I think that this is, it's, it's quite a large ask, okay? And I know that there are benefits to this, but if we're going to make this decision, this is taxpayer dollars that we're foregoing and going to be using. Would we not want to workshop this, or is it, we're, we're going to do it here? We're going to work it out here? And the reason I ask that is because there are definite reasons to go forward with this. But at the same time, I don't think you just carte blanche it. If somebody's coming in to do a, an event and is sending a, a check to an organization, how much? And how much of it do they keep? And what's fair? $18,750 of taxpayer money going towards that. It, it has me concerned because I don't know what that means. Is it, is it going to be at least that much going towards the, the, you know, the charities? Or is it not? Because if it's not, then, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know how to deal with that. Now, I know we had one other recent situation, and that was the other car show that asked for and got and received a stipend or the city's coverage. And I think that that was, if I'm not mistaken, about $9,500. And it went there, there, how they worked it and why we said yes, or why I said yes, I should say, I can't speak for my colleagues, said yes to it was because 100% of the net proceeds are going to one of our institutions, city's institution, so Sandoway House. Nobody was getting anything other than just the cost of, you know, everything that they were having to expense out. And everything else went to that organization. They turned around double that amount to that organization. So there, to me, it would seem like we would want to have some sort of parameters or a, a frame from which to work from. And determining who gets those funds. Is it a frickin' mortar that's our, 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 you know, is a partner in our city? That's really helping out the taxpayers because, you know, this is a, an organization that we're helping with tax dollars? Or is it anybody? So I, I'm going to leave that open to my colleagues to discuss because I think that it's important that we understand where this is potentially going, since this is a first time ask. And, you know, just that we're not saying, sure, you can do it for, you know, we'll do everything for you for, at, you know, for free for this, from the city services. And we really don't know what we're getting back for that. There's got to be a benefit to the city, citizens, citizenry, in order for that, for, for you to do that. Because I, I wouldn't have agreed with it if it hadn't been 100% going to an organization or one of our, one of our, you know, partners that we actually, you know, support. Open it up.
I'm not comfortable under this agenda item giving you all of my input. We just had a workshop on special events, which I think was a good start. And we gave you some feedback, and you're going to be bringing that, you know, back to us whether in a meeting or at a workshop in the future. Because I, I have a lot of thoughts, especially as we go into, to budget in my, in regards to, I think I'd mentioned, you know, special events director. So it's not sitting on the shoulders of a Assistant City Manager or Parks and Rec. And then we might need to talk about what is our budget for sponsoring events for the year, right? So, but this one's kind of, it's, it's in between right now, right? We haven't put those new processes and policies in place. And like I mentioned last time, I think you got to look at it holistically, right? You look at an event, and for me, I look at three things for sponsorship. I look at, is it, is it a free event, right? Which is, event is a free event to attend. Does it benefit the, the area or the businesses? Meaning, are they, are they bringing in a lot of outside, you know, food or, or vendors selling things? This one, this one is not. And, and then, and then lastly, does it, does it give, give back to local causes or local nonprofits, which this one is? I think it's unrealistic to just say, hey, unless you're giving 100% of your, your profits, we're not going to sponsor you. Because, I mean, people have to, have to run these. I mean, think of like a, a Savor the Avenue, right? They can give so much back, but the, the, the local businesses have to be able to pay for the food and the service and the, and the tables and all those things when the DDA does that and sponsors that event. So I, I kind of look at it holistically. It's bringing a lot of people off-season to our downtown that hopefully they'll eat here, they'll shop here. It gives back to our nonprofits. And again, it is a, it is a free event for, for our locals and for visitors. So I'm, I, I'm very much in support of this, but I look, very much look forward to continuing this conversation and putting more of, more input into that new policy and, and process. Just not tonight on this agenda item.
I agree. I just, there's some clarity about, you know, the benefit to the, the community. The special events policy was never finalized, and I would just like to, I guess, workshop it so that we can finalize a policy so that we'll know, have some guidelines to, you know, to go forward with this request and others like them.
Sir.
Thank you. Jeff, thank you for the information. I, I went by the examples that were given about public purposes, right? Promote community welfare, improve quality of life for citizens and visitors, build a sense of community, provide enriched cultural opportunities. Only thing I know about this event is there's some cars on the Old School Square grass. I don't know if there's anything else entailed to it, but people bring their fancy cars, and you walk around, you take a look at them. People love cars. I, I just, was never one of my things. But in the request letter that was received, it looks like to Mr. Moore, April 8th, there was no information about what other sponsors were obtained. I don't believe it's a nonprofit that's throwing this. I think it's a for-profit, money-making operation. And I did speak to one of the charitable organizations of the five that were listed, and that organization doesn't think the city should waive the 18,000. So that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. Long.
You know, I, I agree with the comments made by Vice Mayor and by Commissioner Burns, you know. I see the benefits of this event. Brings a lot of business into the city, and it is giving to. Brings a lot of business into the city, and it is giving to several of our nonprofits. But we do, moving forward, need to establish some parameters, so I would like to see us workshop how we're gonna deal with this moving forward.
Okay, so are we talking about agreeing to this but workshopping further? Because it feels like you would want to workshop it and then agree to it after you've decided what is proper, instead of just jumping off and saying yes. You open up more of a, you know, precedent you set, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of, yeah, you kind of set that. So I, I'm with everybody about at least workshopping this. I think we should. I don't think that we need to bounce off of it. This is not the first time that this is run. We didn't do it last time. It was, you know, it's a non, this is not necessarily the, like, no, I was gonna, I was gonna say Commissioner Frankel indicated it's, it's a for-profit organization. And generally, what we try to do is, in the past we have, is make sure that when we're doing these types of things, we're giving away tax dollars and, you know, there's a reason that there's a lot of overhead in the city, and this is one of the reasons, that we actually are doing it for a purpose. And I understand my colleague here saying that there's purposes, but there's no quantitative purpose here. How much are they giving to each of these organizations? Is it more than eighteen thousand? Should it be double that in order for us to say we're gonna allow for twenty thousand dollars of, you know, tax dollars to go to that so that we can get forty thousand dollars in return to, to those? Those are the questions that I think have, have been left unanswered here, and I think that it's probably not a good idea to move forward without having those answers before you do.
Do we have time to table this and do a workshop before the events gonna take place?
So I agree, it should be tabled, and I think you can always come back with a retroactive request for sponsorship. I mean, you know, I don't think you're gonna get a workshop before June seventeenth. Our workshop agenda is pretty- And I do think that you need to have those parameters in place before you consider a request, so that you're being consistent as these requests come before you. And nobody can claim any type of favoritism, any type of benefit or anything like that. This is taxpayer money, like the mayor said, and you wanna make sure that all those boxes are checked before you make a decision. And you also wanna determine, you know, the percentages. You know, typically, we don't do a hundred percent. There's a, I thought it was fifty percent. So I would recommend tabling it. If Mr. Zengage needs a decision before, then perhaps we can get a workshop before. Otherwise, you know, he can make a retroactive request. The city typically invoices, so we can hold that invoice. Once that policy is set in place, then you can come back and, and consider the request.
So that, and that's fine, and I can be, you know, I can agree to that. I just wish maybe we would have said that after the last workshop, that all sponsorships are, I mean, basically what we're saying are all sponsorships are on hold.
I agree with you.
Right? I mean, that's what we're saying.
I, I think they should have been almost like a zoning in progress, a moratorium, until you make these decisions.
I was gonna use that same line.
This is taxpayer money. You are the stewards of the taxpayer money. It is your responsibility to determine their use and that it's being proper. So I agree with you. I think we need to have a hold on this until that policy is finalized.
However, was this item scheduled to be on our agenda prior to that workshop? Us making that?
No, it was not.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think that's fine. So what we'll do is we'll do a workshop, and we can do retroactive, just, you know, don't worry. It's one of those situations where I think that if, if in fact he fits into the category or to the parameters, we can always send, you know, do it in a retro-
We can do our staff to hold on to the invoice until the proper determination is made.
All right, so we need a motion to table and workshop, is that right?
Motion to table 7C and workshop.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, 7D, motion to approve amendment number one to the management agreement between the city of Delray Beach and the city's Public Library Association.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jeff Horace, Assistant City Manager.
Weird to look down there. I'm kinda always looking, and it just grabs me. Yep, go ahead.
This item is fairly simple. What it was is that, what it is, the library is having problems with their signage, technically under the management agreement. Signage is the city's responsibility. However, they do have a friend of the library willing to repair the sign at no cost. So the best way the attorney found to do this was really to just amend the management agreement for this instance to allow them to go ahead and fix the sign on their own.
Very good. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't entertain a motion.
Motion to approve 7D.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Easy one. Resolution number ninety-five dash twenty-three, also Mr. Horace.
Good evening, Jeff Horace, Assistant City Manager. Again, another one that should be simply, fairly straightforward. I'm sorry, don't have the exact date. January tenth, the city commission had made a decision to continue to cover the cost of parking maintenance to the county on behalf of the library. This new funding agreement will actually memorialize that we will do so on their behalf, as well as is actually memorializing some other things that they need to give us, since they're getting a grant from us, which are the same items that we require from all the other grantees we, we fund over the course of the year. So it's a standard agreement for the most part, just says that we'll continue to pay that parking on their behalf.
Okay, and so did we ever follow through with the county in asking them if we could utilize the parking facility after hours if we have a big event like we could have had, or we have had in the, you know, in the, in the tennis center? Are they open to that? That's a really an important part. You know, we're, we're doing some maintenance there, so, you know, and we use it during the day? Yeah, so.
Do not know if those discussions have been held as of yet.
I, you know, again, I kinda feel like sometimes I don't even know why. We need to have that conversation. It's such an important thing. It's a, it's a, it's a parking garage in a very great area for our tennis center when we have events. So it's really important, I think, to try to find out if there's a way, oh, do you know something more about this?
Is this agreement for the surface lot?
No, this is-
No, it's the garage.
The garage.
The garage. She's asking about is use of the South County Courthouse parking garage for special events. We do have a contract in place with them that we put, we put in place annually every year, and we do utilize their parking garage, but that, that agreement is not with the library.
Okay.
It is with the county.
Okay, so we have that?
Yes.
All right, great. That's all I wanna know. Great, thank you very much. The other part, I'm good with.
Motion to approve resolution ninety-five dash two-three.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
All right, we already did 7F. We moved that to 7AA. It's 7G, resolution number one oh two dash twenty-three. Ms. Jellin?
Oh. Sorry about that. My agenda is, this is a zoning in progress that we had discussed last week, just for your FYI. Since we had that discussion, we have received four applications for, in lieu of parking, which will be considered. So they're in the pipeline, so they will be considered, but after that, we're gonna have the moratorium for a period of six months, and so we just need a motion.
Are you also going to do surveys and do what we need to do in order to?
Absolutely. We're, we're gonna collect the data, and then we'll bring it to you, and then at that point, you'll decide if you wanna make a change to the code. Staff will make recommendations to you.
Very good, thank you.
Motion to approve resolution number one zero two dash two-three.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes. Okay, now we're moving on to the public hearing items, eight A and eight A one, and they are also quasi-judicial. I know it's not written on there, so I'm gonna read the quasi-judicial rules into the record. Give me a second. This is ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-two, and that's just a report, okay. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city will be allowed twenty minutes each to present their case. The public will be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city commission, staff, and the applicant will be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city and the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good one, good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of the law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. If there's anybody here that is gonna speak to eight A or eight A one, please stand up and be sworn in at this time.
Raise your right hand, please. By the authority vested in me as the notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, so this is the election disclosure of ex parte communication to the city commission.
Mayor, before you ask your colleagues for their ex parte communications, I just wanted to put for the record, and I do have a copy of this that I wanna put into the record for the clerk. On April twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-three, the State of Florida Commission on Ethics issued a press release. In that press release, they made a finding that a complaint that was filed against Deputy Vice Mayor Long was found to have no probable cause, and it was dismissed. And I'm, I'm putting this on the record for this case because I know that Ms. Miskell is one of the registered agents, and I'm sure she'll be speaking on this today and going forward. So there is no conflict of interest, and so I'll give this to the clerk to put in for the record.
Very good. All right, so disclosure of ex parte communication?
Sure. I've spoken to the applicant, Ms. Miskell, and probably Mr. Costello, just for the abundance of caution.
Okay. Mr. Long?
I haven't spoken to anyone about this particular project.
Very good.
Haven't spoken to anyone about this project, meeting with the applicant.
Okay, and I, anything that I have would be on the server. The only person I might have spoken to about this would be Mr. Costello. So at this point in time, we're going to enter the project, have the, have the staff enter project file into the record. Just making sure it works.
It's working.
And the Agent Notice Development Services Director, I'm actually gonna enter two files into the record. SADs have a companion class five, so in an abundance of caution, I will enter file two thousand and twenty-two dash one one two, which is the rezoning file, and file number twenty-two two one one zero, which is the class five. That is an integral component of that SAD. And the applicant is here with the presentation. Okay, very good. Sir.
Good evening. Thomas Kurian, TCR, three seven one five Northside Parkway, building two hundred, suite, suite eight hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three two seven. I am representing the applicant. Doing a short recap for everybody. It's been quite a, quite a while since we've seen the commission, so good to see you again.
We got two new ones up here, too.
That's right. It looks like Ms. Burns stepped out, so hopefully she'll be back shortly. We can catch her up, but we just, before I hand it off to Jeff and Bonnie, just wanna take some time to catch you guys up on what we've been doing since you saw us back in November, I believe. So again, this is, here we go. This is the ordinance three two, three two 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 regarding real property at eleven fifty-five South Congress. We are exploring the rezoning amendment of the LDRs as well as the, excuse me, as, as well as the MDP approval that we had presented in November. Just quickly to reorient everyone here with the property along South, South Congress Avenue buffered, buffering us to the east, or excuse me, the west, the CSX line, and ninety-five buffering to, to the east Congress on the west side. And again, just enlargements of those blow-up images. Just recapping here, what, what has already been read into the record of the rezoning, the amendment, and the approval of the MDP. Overall, this project, and our quick recap here is that, you know, we came in November for our appeal, an appeal that was approved, as well as a first reading that was approved that sent us over to the SBRAB board, which we met with them in late February, and we received quite a bit of feedback just on the look, feel, materiality of this project. So we, we were deferred in late February. We, we took a, we requested to be deferred so that we could continue to work on this project, get it into the shape that the city of Delray felt comfortable with. One of the major takeaways with that is, again, we worked on materiality, a pretty extensive redesign of our clubhouse, and continuing to improve upon our materials so that the SBRAB board could better understand what this project was, how we were engaging our civic spaces. Overall, all those changed, through all those changes in compliance with our LDRs, with our MDP. I'll let Jeff and Bonnie kinda go into the specifics of those, but overall, all the updates that we've made have stayed within our proposal, and again, just providing some additional feedback. So still providing two five-story buildings fronting along Congress Avenue, a two-story clubhouse along Congress Avenue between the two buildings in our adjacent to, let's see, does this thing work? Adjacent to our main drive aisle, focus being continuing our, our central plaza and public corridor. And so with that, I just wanna jump into, there we go, just identifying our site plan here. I think what you've seen is our master development plan and just our updated site plan showing all the specific areas that we had proposed. Civic spaces along Congress Avenue, pool, pool deck, totlot, all the interior amenities to this project, as well as our, again, our central plaza, which will be open for the community to circulate through the property onto the future public trailway that is being established by the city of Delray, and we will be implementing this phase on our parcel. In a little bit more detail, just, these are some of the images that the SBRAB board had requested of us to understand the scale of this project, how it was working, how we are contributing to this, the public realm here. One of the big items in our LDRs is the building setbacks and how are we utilizing the twenty-five-foot buffer? And so really emphasizing what, what our master development plan has always shown, but actually putting it into a rendering so that the city can really see this a little bit clearer and understand our intentions with this project, as well as, so you can, you can see on the first, first image, the public trail on Congress Avenue. The second image, our central plaza where, where residents of Delray Beach, as well as residents of the community, can filter down to the public trail. This image, you know, is looking at our property in this area. And lastly, the public trail itself and the proposal for screening. Again, all of this was reviewed, approved, and worked on in conjunction with the city staff, with the SBRAB board, to get a look and feel that felt appropriate. Again, just some of the project amenities that we were asked to expand upon, so just to show you our pool deck to the rear of the property, the totlot, the actual equipment that we're proposing in our enclosed totlot, bike storage rooms, dog parks, all the elements that bring this, tie this project together and both create an area not just for, for residents of our community, but a place that residents of Delray can also utilize. Lastly, I just wanted to, again, show you these latest images. I think what you guys have seen has only been in a two, two-dimensional plane and maybe some very rough initial imagery of this project. So again, here, here's our primary, primary view, looking south to, looking south on Congress Avenue. This is our clubhouse and building one. Again, matching up architectural styles, emphasizing how we can create the pedestrian corridors, an opportunity for us to work with the city of Delray Art Commission and, you know, introduce murals and try and get another piece on the Delray Art Trail, hopefully. That, that's our intention to work with the city to continue to expand upon that. This is our view heading, looking down our drive aisle from Congress Avenue back towards the public trail. Again, creating an open environment that promotes residents to be able to utilize our property to get down to the public trail and- our property to get down to the public trail and, you know, show the true pedestrian scale that we're proposing. Lastly, again, a larger look at that public plaza. Again, all these efforts that we did over the past, call it, four months, it was all done within the footprints, the confines of our LDRs that we've established for ourself, as well as the master development plan that you guys have been reviewing. So really, the efforts that we've put together are to really show you guys exactly how this would work. Again, Sprab Board had requested this, and we felt it was appropriate to just bring you guys up to speed so that you understood what we were doing for the past four months. I know we were moving fast, and then all of a sudden we disappeared off the face of the earth for a while, so needed to just get you guys up to speed. And other things, we're still holding true to our 20% workforce housing, our contribution to the Housing Fund. Again, these are more of the technical details that I'll hand off to Bonnie and Jeff. I'll be available, any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, Bonnie Miskel, 14 Southeast Fourth Street. I have been sworn, very nice to see you all this evening. There are a few more pictures that, though this is the last one. This is on the backside, and we'll get into the legal requirements of this request. But this is just next to the Greenway Path facing east, adjacent to the tracks. So the SAD requires that we submit our own set of regulations, and so I'm going to try to hit on the highlights. You had a very thick package. We've been through this for months. There's a lot of materials associated with this package. A lot of work was performed and done by staff, and they've done a very thorough analysis. But we're going to hit the highlights and try to get through this pretty quickly for you. So this project and the master plan provides for a freestanding multifamily apartment complex, 100% residential floor area to support existing and future area businesses, providing additional housing inventory, and you will note that also workforce housing. We're promoting, and it was designed to, and you, I've been before you on a lot of other Congress corridor projects, maybe not for the newer commissioners, but through those presentations, you've heard a lot from staff and from the applicants about walkability, the pedestrian experience, encouraging more bike use, trying to get some of those trips off the road and make the sites better connected. Connectivity is another term that we throw out. We have spent at least a year and a half trying to improve on that. Your staff has encouraged us to do so, and we've worked very hard in that regard. This one may be the best one as it relates to connectivity, connecting the Greenway to Congress, making it easy to get throughout the site, larger sidewalks, meandering sidewalks, a better pedestrian experience on Congress, plazas and open spaces throughout the site. That's what everyone's attempting to achieve here. I think this developer has done a very good job of it. So number two, promoting a more walkable and sustainable atmosphere by encouraging not just the standalone multifamily, but lifestyle amenities, open spaces and plazas throughout the site, and also increasing the connectivity between this site and the others through the Greenway and also through the Congress sidewalk experience. This, if, this is currently zoned MROC, and MROC does a lot of those things. MROC also has a requirement for 20% workforce for the bonus density. That was an ordinance that was changed in the last year. We have incorporated that same 20% requirement into this project, but we've gone beyond what this project offers, is something different than anyone else has. In addition to the 20% requirement that is part of our regulations, there is also going to be a $350,000 contribution to the Delray Housing Trust, Delray Beach Housing Trust Fund, and that can be applied to other good causes, workforce-related throughout your city. And this developer is offering that as part of their set of regulations. The other thing that we've heard over the years at this applicant, and I have heard over the years, is that Delray Beach is not looking for towers. Now, MROC happens to be one of the categories in the city that has the highest height. It allows 85 feet. We did not want to go there. We think a better pedestrian experience is with buildings that are more pedestrian-friendly. You're not staring next to a building that is 85 feet tall, but rather 48 feet tall. So we are actually coming in under what the MROC otherwise would have required or allowed, and we have capped the height at 48 feet for this project. We've included the perimeter buffers and similar setbacks, and in fact, this one is not, would not even have needed a waiver under the MROC because they push the buildings closer to the street so that you have eyes on the street, you have activity there, you have people that, you know, that will feel more engaged by the landscaping and the scale of the improvements that are at the street level. Lots of civic open spaces in public plazas, as Thomas showed you on our master plan, both in the front on Congress where it can be enjoyed not just by pedestrians walking along the street, frontage, but also by vehicles passing by, but also internal to the site and east on the Greenway. And then finally, these buildings will be compliant with the National Building Green Standards. So as is always the case, there are legal requirements that we must comply with in order to justify this request. First one, Section 3.1.1. Your staff reviews for consistency with the land use map, concurrency, consistency with the comp plan in general. That's included in your report. You know, we meet the concurrency. They've evaluated drainage, solid waste parks, open space, and traffic. I'll just highlight traffic. When you evaluate traffic, you look at what is there today. Oops, I'm sorry. We won't be much longer. If you could just give us another five minutes, please. But on concurrency as an example, they look at what's there today, which is mostly a vacant site, as compared to the proposed development. It is an increase in traffic by 1,385 trips. However, when you look at what the proposed development will generate in traffic compared to what could be there at the maximum MROC FAR, you're looking at about 10,000 trips for, under MROC. So we're, by doing this, we're actually keeping traffic off the streets, which again, it helps pedestrian movement, it helps bike movement, it discourages automobile movement. And so we'll just move forward. In addition to 3.1.1, there's also 3.2.2, and I'll cut right to the chase in that. There are really, you talk about the similarity. We attempted very much to keep this project within the realm of what could have been done under the MROC, with the exception of the 25% retail part. And I just wanted, you know, I read the CBRE report that you may have seen in February, doing the assessment of that corridor, and one of the things that they noted was that there is an oversaturation of retail on this corridor. It's significant, and in 10 years, there will still be an oversaturation. So this does not include commercial. We did not believe it was appropriate, but we are required to apply for an SAD for that reason. Lastly, 2.4.5D2, we either need to demonstrate that the zoning was done in error, which is not the case, that there has been a change in circumstance, which we believe very strongly there has been, and/or that it is of similar intensity. We are of similar intensity. It's, the CMU allows an SAD as an implementing zoning district, and it is very similar to the MROC. So we're consistent in those two regards. And, you know, I won't go into this, but when the always Delray Plan was adopted, you identified a deficit of 5,471 housing units to satisfy the next, from 2015 to 2035. You are still well under that deficit. This will help to get, to help bring that deficit down. And then we talked about the similar intensity, so I won't go into that. And that would be it. We are here to answer any questions that you may have, or if you'd like for us to wait until after the public speaks, we'd be happy to do so, too. Thank you very much. Appreciate the extra time.
Got it, absolutely. Staff?
Okay. Moved over so I could try to see. Okay, so I will do my best to not duplicate anything between the two presentations if I can. Okay, so this is a rezoning. This is the, the item before you is moving from MROC to SAD. And I think the applicant was quite honest that, you know, this is very consistent with MROC, except for the fact that it is 100% residential. To be honest, SAD is not the best vehicle for 100% residential either. It is crafted for those uses that fall outside of the regular zoning district or that are large-scale mixed use. However, we don't do use variances. They are bringing, if something would be considered special by their proposal, it's the fact that they are constructing 20% workforce housing units onsite in addition to a monetary contribution to the Housing Trust Fund, which we allow other developments that have a workforce housing requirement to do in lieu of constructing onsite. So what you have before you is pretty much a 100% residential project, but it's, you know, bringing you a different, you know, mix of market and workforce. And so this is the vehicle that's brought before you. I, and, you know, I think there's, this is part of why we're doing this Congress Avenue review, right? Because the project is, it's these corridors that have the same demand to protect our commercial tax base moving forward, are the same ones that are the opportunity for workforce. And this has been the decision that has faced three of the five of you in recent years over and over again. So this is ultimately a 267 multifamily residential development that is located on almost seven acres, 6.74. It's on the east side of Congress, west of 95, between, you know, Linton, so it's the south side. It's currently vacant. It used to have a warehouse on it a while ago that is vacant. And CMU is the land use, which, while the preferred district is MROC, the proposed district is considered, you know, a, an acceptable zoning under the land use. And so as Ms. Miskel went over, the determinations to approve this rezoning is that there has to be a valid reason to change it, and those are the criteria. One, only one of the three has to be considered valid. There are other standards in 322 that must be found. The one that applies is that the uses that the rezoning will result in. SAD is a little different because you're seeing a site plan with it, a master development plan actually accompanies this ordinance. The Class V is in more detail, but it has to be consistent with the MDP that is an exhibit to this ordinance before you. And so you have to determine that those uses are compatible with the adjacent and nearby land uses, both those that exist today and that can come along in the future under the land use and the zoning. So it's important to note that the surrounding uses are similar. Residential is allowed in MROC, even though it is anticipated to be a mixed development. The physical build form that results from the application of the SAD ordinance, this is really for the, for those of you who are new, this type of zoning, you define your rules. So that's what you see as the development standards that are attached to this rezoning. Not only is there an MDP, but it tells you all the uses, the setbacks, the perimeter landscape, those things that accompany this. So what is defined in this ordinance as part of the SAD has to be determined to be consistent with what could come in around it. So this is what's around it now. It butts the CSX rail corridor. There's an older strip shopping mall to the south. Delray Highlands is across, Abbey Delray is down the street. There's a storage facility to the north. So ultimately, the uses that this ordinance and the MDP that accompanies it bring forward is a 100% residential project at a density of 40 dwelling units per acre. That is the most that MROC would allow in this situation also, so that's consistent. There's a breakdown of a mix of units between one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, with one-bedrooms being the predominant type. 20% of all onsite workforce housing would be restricted to the moderate type, which is in this city, consistent with state statutes. It goes up to 120 AMI. The county allows a little bit more, but we have made the decision in this city to stay at 120 as a max. There are amenities, other uses for the residents that are included, lot coverage, the open space, and the civic open space. All of those things are fairly consistent and meet the minimum standards that would have been in place should it have stayed under MROC. And all of the developments that you see coming along that, about the CSX, there is a bike ped trail in the rear. One of the adjustments that the applicant made early on to the site was that, you know, staff was concerned that, you know, there needed to be a green or some oversight or things that would happen along there, and so the bicycle storage was ultimately placed there, and the green is open, there's a view. This is a surface lot, so it has more transparency than some of the buildings you've seen recently that are much more significant. And the maximum building height is 48 feet. However, in the effort of keeping the building height low, five stories are put into 48 feet, which is not ideal, and in fact, was the impetus behind why we added a number of stories to the Central Business District years ago, because we wanted to have a higher quality standard. So the difference is that SAD specifically says in the code that it can't go over 48 feet for the residential components. So this is where shifting to SAD and moving away from MROC with the 85 feet, you know, is resulting in residences that, they'll have their eight-foot ceilings for sure, but, you know, it's not ideal, and a couple more feet probably would have served the project better. Ultimately, this is a limitation by choosing SAD. There is a parking adjustment that's been made for this project. The applicant has submitted support justification. The Sprab evaluated that as part of their review of Class V as well. So this is what I was talking about, that the project, you know, has, the architectural features are allowed to extend beyond it, but the number of stories is not specified in the ordinance. Five are identified actually in the project. So hopefully, there's nine-feet floor-to-ceiling, but that only leaves a six-inch slab between. So by the time you add the other things, you know, it's going to be a little bit, a little bit lower than would be ideal. Again, the workforce housing is regulated by the county's AMI, and in addition, $350,000 are to be conveyed to the Housing Trust Fund. That trust fund is used to assist people with down payment assistance. So while it's not a physical unit, it creates workforce housing, you know, as part of that adopted plan for different families in the city. And there's other items that the plan calls for, that those dollars are used to advance affordability for Delray Beach. It is located about 3,000 feet from the Tri-Rail Center in the MROC District. We, the density is aligned, depending on how close you are to transit, in an effort to make that happen. A five-minute walk is a quarter mile if you're walking, and in this case, you could be walking to the strip center next door to pick up milk if you forgot it, and it would eliminate that car trip. In this case, while it's outside of the five-minute walk shed for Tri-Rail, it's important to note that the state defines a half-mile transit shed because folks will take the bike to get on the train to do the work trip. It's just outside of the half-mile. MROC, again, would want the non-residential uses, but to be fair, SAD would expect it to, but allows this avenue instead. So again, while MROC is a preferred district, SAD is considered compatible in the comprehensive plan. In terms of concurrency, there will be an increase by the number of units of 1,385 trips. Because of its location, the traffic is considered by the county, and the TPS letter has indicated that the county finds it to be in compliance with standards. There's some limitations in terms of the movements, but they've all been absorbed in the plan that is accompanying this. There is no negative impact identified by the school. The city will collect a $500-per-unit parks fee at the time of building permit, as we do for all residential units and hotel rooms. In terms of consistency, there's multiple policies relating to why CMU is looking for a variety of commercial office and residential use, and also the purposes of balancing uses among the corridor. And that's where I think we're, we've turned to an outside analysis to see what we need to do to adjust in the future. So what's coming before you now is 100% residential. And then also, the next screen. And then also the, the next Green Street, which talked about, um, protecting the job base and other things. However, we also have a housing element that, that has identified the extreme need that we have for workforce housing and other, other, um, issues related towards expanding affordability for people in the city. Um, in terms of consistency, um, SAD has established as a zone to, um, accommodate developments that would otherwise not be accommodated under the base zoning. And that's probably the biggest finding that you need to make a determination related to the SAD in comparison to the MROC. And, okay, so the MDP, which accompanies this, um, and I believe that, um, this board, excuse me, I'm sorry. Most of this board saw as an appealable item. Um, this, this project has been before multiple boards and had a significant amount of public review and input. So, um, this is, uh, what's before you, 40 use per acre, um, which again is, um, consistent with what would be allowed provided the workforce is there. Uh, parking, um, for over 400 spaces are provided. 476 would normally be required. Um, there's a landscape buffer, uh, that succeeded. Um, the setbacks and the design of the engagement along the Congress corridor has, um, been very thoughtfully designed to, to try to, um, realize those goals. So ultimately, the question before you for your considerations, for the findings before you is, um, whether the proposed, proposed project qualifies as an SAD in that it's all residential, but it's bringing a percentage of workforce housing forward? Um, whether, uh, the change in circumstances in the site of the neighborhood renders, uh, the preferred MROC zoning district inappropriate? Um, the, I think the, the word trade-offs actually exists in the code because I don't, I don't think we use that. But, um, it does say that you can, uh, make a judgment call that, um, that what's before you, because it doesn't implement every comp plan, it implements enough that, um, you can make the decision that the, that the project or the rezoning is appropriate. And whether, uh, the fact that it's bringing 20% workforce housing at the moderate level only, but it's constructed onsite plus an additional contribution into the Housing Trust Fund for other efforts, um, is considered special and meets the goals for the corridor and the city as a whole. And if the proposed height, um, is more appropriate for five stories, should more height be required? But ultimately, I don't know that there's a way to have them find five or six more feet in the code as it stands today. So. Again, this has gone to planning and zoning. Um, it's, um, they've worked really hard with the SPRAB board and other boards, um, moving through. Um, so the project before you is, I think, complete. Um, you'll see that the SPRAB Class 5 is an adjacent, is an, um, item. It's 8A1, so it can't be on an appealable list until this ordinance moves forward. And if this moves forward, there's no reason to, it doesn't move forward, then there's no reason to have here an appealable, so they are together. And, um, they are intertwined enough. I'm sure any questions you have about the Class 5 would be easily answered as part of this process as well. So I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks so much. Mayor, can you open it up? I need to read the caption.
Sure.
Ordinance number 32-22. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, rezoning approximately 6.74 acres located at 1155 South Congress Avenue for mixed residential office and commercial MROC to special activities districts, SAD. Said land generally located on the east side of South Congress Avenue, approximately 970 feet north of Linton Boulevard. Is more particularly described here in amending the Land Development Regulations of the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 4, Zoning Regulations, Article 4.4, Bezoning District, Section 4.4.25, Special Activities District, SAD, Subsection 4.4.25H, SADS, to add the Alexon Delray Special Activities District, amending the City of Delray Beach zoning map, July 6, 2021, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, providing an effective date, and further purposes.
Okay, great. This is a public hearing, so anybody who would like to speak to ordinance number 32-22, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Oh, boy.
How she goes around.
Okay.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Very quickly, I live in the development directly across from this proposed site. My name is Alex Wolf. I live at 1234 Southwest 22nd Avenue. I am a 35-year resident of that community. Me, I'm here to represent myself and my community. We oppose it. The mixed situation that you have now was implemented six or seven years ago. This was originally commercial. We do not oppose that. We oppose this number of units over there. First of all, as you just mentioned, 400 parking spaces for that unit? That's not even two per. This is the year 2023. Every household has a minimum of two cars, especially with children. Let's talk about trying to get out of my community. The traffic now stands at Linton past our community. How is that going to get better? We're not going to make a left turn. You think they're not going to go the 100 feet up to the break in the road and make the turnaround? We won't be able to get out of our development. Five stories with another 10 feet above it? A six-story building, correctly proposed from commercial homes? And a small strip mall? No, we have no small business locations in the, in the Delray Beach anymore for mom-and-pop businesses. This would be an opportunity for a dry cleaner, a tailor, et cetera, as a mixed facility. What they're proposing there is another gigantuan situation, which will be ugly on our area. It'll be, absolutely hurt our property values. And it'll create a crime situation, just as, as, uh, well, what's now known as Lakaya, which is one of your worst crime areas in the area. It's all rental. You think this won't become all rental? Oh, yes, we're going to get, uh, 50, 50 housing units for, uh, lower-cost people. What does that do? What does that bring to our community? That's all I'm going to say. I can just tell you, how does this improve the quality of my life, having lived here 35 years and paid taxes here 35 years? I don't see it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Here comes Alice.
Alice Spence, 707 Place Tavern. Um, I've seen another presentation on this, and I just have to narrow it down. I think it's too big, too tall, and too much. Does that name it all? It's not a beautiful addition for this area or the, at all for the city. Please, 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 send this back to wherever it came from and said, "Sorry, folks."
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. We go back to, um, the applicant for any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony?
No cross-examination or rebuttal.
No? And what about the staff? Any rebuttal or cross?
No.
All right, very good. Um, to the commission. Mr.?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start. Um, I appreciate the public comments. We're all, we all drive in the same traffic. Uh, we all, we all live here. Um, but that's actually why I'm in favor of this project is because we have the opportunity to approve the rezoning with a master plan, and they're going to build less than what they can. We don't get that opportunity too often. Um, there are property rights, and individuals who own properties get to build what they're, what's a zone for. They normally don't come to us and say they want to build less. And, uh, and I, I understand the mixed-use component. Our study shows that we have a lot of retail on Congress and that we don't actually, that we don't actually need more. And that would add to the traffic. If there was a Starbucks, a Chipotle, a Bola, or Chick-fil-A, right? That would add to the traffic. So I'm actually in favor of this because it is only, only residential and because it is lower and less dense or equal to, um, what could be built there. We don't get that opportunity too often. As you can see in our comprehensive plan, we do have to add housing. We do need affordable housing. Um, and, uh, in 60% of them being one-bedroom, I'm comfortable with the, with the, the parking scenario as well. Um, so I, I will be in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Burns?
Yes, um, I would also be in favor. I, I, this is backs up to the, the real, the real, okay. So I, I think it does meet the goals, um, of the city for affordable housing, more affordable housing, and, um, the goals for the corridor and the city as a whole. Um, I didn't see or detect any negatives. Um, and as, uh, my colleague said, you know, you know, this is, this is a one-in-a-shot-like opportunity, um, to get less than what they could have done. So I'm in support.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, I, I can echo the comments of my two colleagues that just spoke. Um, I think this could be a lot worse, given what could be built there. And then this applicant has chosen to build considerably less than what they could possibly build. Um, I would rather see residential there. I think commercial is actually much worse for traffic. And we, rather than approve something commercial in that area. And as we know, the comp plan calls for housing, which is something we desperately need here. And I'd love to see 54 units of affordable housing being built. So I'm in favor.
Okay, and Commissioner Frankel?
Thank you. I was in favor in first reading. I have not been swayed to change my opinion, so I will be in favor again tonight.
Okay, and I'm going to be the opposing person. Um, I wasn't in favor initially. I'm not going to be in favor tonight. Um, building less parking and more units per acre is not my idea of the best suited that. And in addition to that, I don't believe it meets the SAD requirement. So I'm going to be saying no to it. So with that.
Yeah, just a correction. It's not more units per acre. Um, because of the, the bonus, they could actually go up to 40 units per acre, so it's equal. Is that correct?
Okay, well, I mean, I was just reading the, I took a screenshot because it wasn't on there.
I know, and it, it noted it with the bonus for 20% workforce that they go up to 40. So just to set the record straight, it's the same amount of density. It's almost half the amount of height. And I got to say thank you to SPRAB because they put a lot of work into this project and really thought through some key things that I think we need to work into all of our projects in the future. Um, so, uh, I, I move to approve ordinance number 32-22.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Nope.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
All right, now moving on to...
Do you need to, another motion?
On 8A1, it's just a motion to...
Do we have to go through anything with that, or is it also quasi-dedicial?
Unless you, you want to appeal it. Does, is, is anybody, is anybody inclined to appeal it?
Motion to approve 8A1.
Second.
Do you have to read anything into the?
No, it's just a motion to receive and file the report. That's all you're doing.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, um, moving on to first readings. Yep. Have a good evening. Um, 9A, this is ordinance number 20-23. It's a first read, guys.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, rezoning and redesigning a parcel of land approximately .63 acres in size, located at 214 Northeast 22nd Lane, presently zoned, neighborhood commercial and seats, a single-family residential, R1AA, as more particularly described herein, amending the City of Delray Beach zoning map, July 6, 2021, providing a co, conflicts clause, a severability clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. First reading, no, uh, presentation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 9B, ordinance number 18-23.
All right, get comfortable. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinance, Title 5, Public Works, Chapter 56, Stormwater Subsection General Provisions, by amending Section 56.03, findings and determinations to modify the intent of stormwater management assessments to include fully funding the stormwater management system enterprise fund and modifying the basis for assessment from a per-acreage charge to a tier-based system for residential properties. By amending Section 56.04, definitions to clarify definitions to reflect current land use and cover conditions that will serve as a basis for stormwater management assessment. By amending Section 56.15, imposition of stormwater management assessment, classification and criteria to clarify the application of assessments to develop property and to remove references to the per-acreage assessment system. By amending Sections 56.16, establishing a rate for stormwater management assessments to repeal the existing per-acreage stormwater management assessment system, to adopt a tier-based stormwater management assessment system for residential properties, to delete discounts for properties, for property located within the Lakewood Drainage District and property with, with privately maintained drainage systems. By amending Section 56.17, adjustment of stormwater management assessments to update references to the Environmental Services Department to Public Works, deleting language requiring consideration for retention facilities for owner-initiated adjustments, removing discount eligibility for property with private drainage facilities, and deleting language authorized in the city to inspect private drainage facilities. By amending Section 56.20, private facilities to clarify responsibilities related to maintenance and operations and inspections on private property. And by amending Section 56.23, stormwater assessment process to provide authorization to establish reserves and to require the preparation of a stormwater management assessment role annually, providing a conflicts clause, providing a severability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
That's what happens when you're here for about four hours straight. All right, so we're at the comments and inquiries on non-agenda items. Mr. Moore?
I yield at this time. Thank you.
Okay, city attorney, we've got a little bit more business going on here.
We have a little bit more business. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation. It's quick. I know, right? Um, there was just a lot of information, so I thought it would be better. I just want to start out by saying that, um, I do thank Commissioner Burns for bringing this up because when I was looking into this, I realized that I had sent everybody a memorandum. I don't think we've ever really publicly discussed this. So I think it's good to just clear the air, make sure everybody's on the same page so that we all understand, you know, why, why it is we're doing what I think we should do. And by "we," I mean you. So, um, I don't have the clicker, so can somebody just, thank you. So the background, the CRA was established back on June 18th of 1985 as an independent board comprised of seven members appointed by the city commission. You know this. On May 1st, 2018, city commission voted to declare itself as a governing body of the CRA. Three of you know this, because you were there. And you did that by establishing resolution, um, declaring yourself as the governing body and adding two additional members. And that's kind of what we're going to focus on today. Next slide. Um, so back in March of 2021, oh, look who's here.
Wow.
So back in March of 2021, you posed this question to me. What are the composition requirements of the CRA? We did some research, and you really have three options. Option number one is appoint all independent members. Option number two is for the commission to declare itself as a CRA. And now option number three is to declare itself as a CRA and add two additional members. Next slide. So the Community Redevelopment Act of 1969, which is codified in Florida Statute 163, that's where we have the parameters for the creation of a CRA. Um, essentially, when the governing body determines that there's a need, you adopt a resolution upon a finding of necessity. Thereafter, by ordinance, the governing body appoints a board of commissioners, um, essentially an independent board. Um, however, Florida Statute 163.357 provides an alternative that would allow the city commission to sit as a CRA. So the presumption is it's going to be an independent board, but when you, when you create the CRA, you do have this alternative. Next slide, please. So, so under 163.357, that's the alternative provision that allows a governing body to sit as a CRA. So this is the alternative to the appointment of, of, of an independent board. And what it says is, as an alternative, I'm putting in parentheses, to the appointment of an independent board, the governing body, which is you, may at the time of the adoption of a resolution, that's when you declare the need, or at any time thereafter, by adoption of a resolution, declare itself to be, um, the agency, which is the CRA. And it also authorizes the appointment of two additional members. So, um, you are authorized to exercise this alternative. Next slide. So we have, um, obtained, um, several attorney general opinions. Um, the first, actually, the last one, um, no, sorry, the middle one, is really the one that's most on point. So, um, once the city commission, um, exerts this authority to sit as a CRA board, you can't, like, as my kids would say, you can't do backseats. So you can't go back and say, you know what? We're going to transfer that, our existing authority to an independent board. The only time that you can exercise that is when it's created, right? When it's established. You have an established CRA board. So that's why we know that we can revert back. Um, and then AGO 97-point, uh, dash 04, the governing body is a CRA is the exception. So as you know, you can't, um, we have dual office holding prohibitions. So that actually authorizes you to sit as both without violating, um, any ethics laws. And then AGO 98-16, city commission cannot remove one of its members from the CRA, and you can't resign from it either. So once you establish, that's the Commissioner Frankel rule. So I know, that's why I put that in there. Frankel rule. So I know, that's why I put that in there. So once you establish that rule, you all have to sit there and you can't...
I tried to give it to Ms. Odom, she wouldn't take it.
And now look who's the chair.
Look at that.
You know, look at that.
We've gone full circle, right?
A long way.
All right, so next slide, please. We're at the end. So this is a summary. So there's no provision for the transfer of governance of an established CRA to an independent board of commissioners. You guys are the established board, right? So you've already made that alternative selection. You've made that, you declared that intent. So in 2018, you did that. So you wanted, you're acting as a governing body of the CRA. Once you make that election to designate yourselves as a governing body, there's no provision in Florida that permits the transfer of the authority back to the independent board. And so that's where we're at today. I do believe, now, there's no opinion specific to the addition of the two members. However, when you look at the statutes and you read them together, that is the alternative provision. And so my position is, it's, once you've made that election to be the governing body, it's the governing body. There's no provision for two additional members. And so I know Renee is here. We've had this discussion, you know, back in 2021, we had this discussion. And, you know, my position has always been that I think we need to be consistent with Florida statute. We don't need to draw attention to things. And so if the commission is going to follow my advice, I would recommend, I did put a sample, a draft resolution in there that would just strictly establish you as the governing body. And then obviously, if you wanted, I did put samples of what other municipalities do with advisory committees. That's obviously within your purview. Renee is more than happy to help you establish that, you know, as part of the CRA. But I do think that you should have a conversation about really conforming to the Florida statutes.
So let me ask a question, because I guess maybe I got lost here, because you started with that you can have that, you can go ahead and designate the two, and now all of a sudden you're saying it really, you can't. And what is it that changed that?
So when you look at the alternative to the composition of the board, so once you're making that election to be independent, the, the non-commissioned members, those are as part of that original, you know, the original under 163.367. So that's, you get, you have non-elected positions through that essential, through that enabling the, when you first established a CRA. And so when you make that conversion to this independent board, that provision's not there.
So the reason I ask that is because there's a lot of CRAs that have sitting commissioners and two additional members. And there's also CRAs that are with sitting commissioners looking to, they're actually moving to put two additional members on their board. So if it's not possible, how is that happening?
So back when you asked me to look into this, I don't know what those other municipalities are doing. We actually called the author of the attorney general opinion that I referenced before, and that was a conversation that we had. And so, you know, we didn't ask for a formal opinion, but her position was that in looking at those two statutes, the configuration that we currently have, while she hadn't opined on it, she really questioned the validity of it when you look at the two statutes, independent of one another.
All right. All right, to the commission who would like to speak.
Yeah, I think, I think this opens up a really great, you know, opportunity for us to get as close to an independent board as possible, which I would have preferred to work with the independent CRA board and try to fix some of the disconnects that were there before. That ship has sailed, so now we're the CRA board. The current, I think, Ms. Jellin, you know, made a really great point. I also, I also believe that each one of the commissioners should have an appointment. So if we were, as a CRA, to create an advisory, advisory board, each one of us would get an appointment, rather than just two of us getting an appointment on that board. I had a chance to sit down with Renee, and she shared some best practices with me. One of them, obviously, is that the CRA board should appoint that advisory board, not the City Commission. She had some really great reasons for that. Makes a lot of sense, because that is the governing body. And then also, that it shouldn't be a burden on staff. So hopefully, there's an opportunity for the CRA board to maybe meet six times a year with advisory board meeting another six, or some kind of hybrid of that. And for them to really be tasked with, you know, big picture things. So, you know, saying, hey, we really need you to look at next year's budget. Hey, we really need you to tackle the 67800 block topic, the set transformation topic, right? Really empowering them to talk big picture, big projects, rather than just being a board that sees the exact same agenda before we do and just say yea, nay on a bunch of little things. Really giving them the big vision items to bring forward to us and work on. So it was a fantastic conversation. Thank you, Renee, for taking that time with me and bringing some of those best practices. I would absolutely be in favor of moving in that direction, where we are the CRA, and then as a CRA, we can appoint a five-person advisory board that meets just as many times as we do as CRA staff and provides guidance.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes. I too would support conformity to the Florida statute. And a five-member board would, advisory board will allow more public input and diversity. And as is it, those big pictures, and let's, you know, get going with getting our plans done, whatever those are. But I would be in support of the conformity to the statute.
Commissioner Frankel?
Thank you. I'm going to be supportive of that, but I'm going to use my time alternatively, and I preface my comments by not trying to offend my colleagues, my new colleagues. But at least three of us, we've worked very hard on the CRA board for about five years now. And to hear some of the comments during public comment this afternoon was very disappointing. But one stood out, that we're trying to take credit. I want to make it very clear, only three people in this room right now that should be taking credit were the last three people that just walked in. Renee, Kim, and Christine, and the team that works in your office. You guys deserve the credit. I didn't hear any of my colleagues trying to take the credit away from you. So I've said it at CRA meetings, I'll say it again, really appreciate what you all do and the rest of the members who were lucky enough not to come here at 7 o'clock tonight. I say that jokingly, but, you know, Mr. Ridley, I don't think it was you, but some of your friends state, we're trying to take credit. None of us have ever tried. We're trying to work together for the betterment for the CRA district. You get the credit, from my perspective. Thanks.
Thank you. Good comments. Mr. Long?
Yeah, since, you know, we can't put the toothpaste back in the tube with an independent CRA, I think the next best thing would be this structure. And I certainly would prefer to conform with Florida statute. We certainly don't need a target on our back from an increasingly hostile state at this point. So I would like to see us go in the direction of a five-member, just comprising of us on the CRA, and the advisory board, where we each get an appointed member. And I would love to see kind of what Vice Mayor Boylston referenced, almost have it operate like a task force and tackle some of the bigger, more visionary type things coming up. I think we could get really a lot of great synergies out of an arrangement like that. And I think it's an exciting thing that we can all work together towards. So that's where I'm at on it.
And I'm going to be on the opposing side again, which is not unusual, but I just feel like the, the way that this, I have to tell you, Commissioner Frankel, your comments resonate in me. Nobody has been trying to take the credit where credit is maybe due, but nobody really, that's not what this is about. What this is about was trying to get the money into the areas that it was not going into for too many years. And I think we did a good job of that, you know? I mean, listen, it could have been that it was on the brink of going in that direction. It may never have. We don't know. But what we did do was make sure that it did happen. And I think that this was not an issue that began with, in 2018. This was an issue where the previous mayor, Glickstein, was pounding his fist on boardroom tables across from the CRA, trying to get them to put that money into the districts that it deserved to be in and wasn't going into. And it was extremely frustrating, because as a commission, we were being blamed at the same time, because we were choosing those, those, you know, board members who had four-year terms, longer than our terms, by double at that point, or at one point in time. And they weren't necessarily doing what the community wanted them to do, so the community was really looking partially upon us. And so we did the right thing by taking, taking the reins, not with the idea that we would keep them, because I was with you. I would have absolutely kept my promise to you that I wasn't interested in that, but found ourselves down that path and without a way back. But I have to tell you, the one thing that has been very positive for me is, you know, the direction that we have received and the guidance that we have received from, I think somebody used that word, you know, from the two members of the community. And especially one, I mean, one excelled for sure, and that would be Commissioner Angie Gray. She's very connected, and she basically did bring us a lot of interesting issues and topics at which time we discussed and we decided on. But understood, you know, I mean, the, we're going down this path. I just, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned those things, because I think that that will make a difference. Having a vote, having those two extra votes for that community, or for the community, I should say, I think is, was important. But, you know, equally important is, is having a, you know, you know, a group that can also guide us. So I don't have a problem with that, and I think that it could have been accomplished both ways, but I think that we're already moving in that other direction. So I'm not going to speak anymore about it, but other than, let's, we need to do a vote, right?
No, I just need directions. So do you want me to, so I'll bring about the resolution at the next meeting.
Absolutely, and then we'll vote on that. All right, very good. So I think we've, we've decided that. Can I start tonight? Because you guys always start, and I always feel like I got the, and I got a lot of stuff. And you guys were like really, really talkative last time. So, all right, first of all, I want to say, congratulations to the City of Delray Beach for the bus shelter at Shady Woods. I'm very excited about that, and so are they. That went up, and it was a long time coming. I think 10 years, because ever since I've been elected, I've heard from them. Guardrails on the Atlantic Boulevard Bridge. I can't say it enough, I cannot stress enough, how incredibly lucky we have been to not have an absolute accident with someone falling off of the crossover. Other bridges have this. We are one of the most pedestrian, intense bridges, and we don't. And there is zero, and I'm telling you, zero room for, you know, margin, you know, for not getting absolutely hit by a car. Those cars are literally right up against it. I got another email, and I'm telling you, these emails are starting to, they bother me, because there's a liability here. And I don't know how to get this done. I'm looking to you guys to get it done, because I, something has to be done here.
You're saying the drawbridge on Atlantic Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, you said Boulevard, and I was thinking...
I'm sorry, Atlantic Avenue, I'm sorry.
I was racking my brain about, is there a little bridge?
It's eight, no, it's eight o'clock. I'm sorry.
So you're talking about the big, the main?
Absolutely. We have so much going across, and there's zero room for, you know, for, for any kind of a fault.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I offered an update about this a few months ago in writing, the interface with the Florida Department of Transportation, State Bridge, et cetera. So we continue to work to bring our concerns to their attention and lobby and so forth, but...
Maybe we need to do something more than do that, because we're not moving. We're not moving forward. And listen, it's only a matter of time. It's not if, but when. We are going to have a major catastrophe happen on that bridge, and it's going to be a problem, because we're notifying. We keep getting the emails, and we keep notifying.
We understand.
We've got to do something.
I can reach out to the legal...
It's super unsafe.
So the next piece of direction above and beyond what Missy and I were able to address a few months ago is to ascertain liability issues and concerns with legal counsel. So Ms. Jellin, of course, I look forward to your assistance and support in that regard, and we'll advise the commission accordingly.
Isn't it F dot, Missy?
It's all F dot, it's all state.
It might be F dot.
I think it is.
Okay, then we need to let them know.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, okay. I need a new alternative or alternate for the TPA. Is there anybody that would like to do that as a backup? I'm usually there, yeah?
Mr. Long?
I'd love to.
All right, so can we get a, I don't know if you need a motion or no. Okay, okay, we'll make sure that that gets in there. If I'm not able to be there, I'll let you know. J-LAC letter, I sent everybody the copy of it. Mr. Moore, what's going on with that, that we have another?
No. Immediately upon receiving that letter, I forwarded the letter to all of you all that was dated and signed by me Tuesday, March 14, 2023, clarifying in that regard. And a follow-up email to all of you ladies and gentlemen this afternoon, a few minutes later, stated that, as I suspected, that was already provided to them, and I did send it again to J-LAC staff, which they did acknowledge receipt since that time, all squared away.
Did they acknowledge that that was answering that question? Because we've got a couple things on the, we've got a couple of things before them. It's two things, two separate. So I'm asking you because that we received a second, you know, non-responsive letter from them.
It's been addressed, ma'am.
Okay.
In fact, what was shared this afternoon as a result of the follow-up for good measure, and again, I explained this all to you all in writing, was that they have acknowledged and received accordingly. So I think there is a disconnect at that level, but we cannot speak for them. Nevertheless, we took care of the work back in March.
Okay, because I called them today, and they said you had not. So just want to make sure you're aware.
You have a paper trail, you have documentation. I provided that to each of you all. You have that in your possession as of circa 2 o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, very good. Listen.
Very good.
I'm good with it. I'm just telling you that I want to make sure, because I don't want to be in trouble with the state, or have the city in trouble with the state. Okay, Elks Club had their awards. This was really great. Finally, it's been three years since we've been able, they've done this, which is the, the actual joining in of, for the, for the Police of the Year, Fire of the Year, and so on and so forth. So I'm just going to go down, because I think that it's worth it to recognize them. So Police Detective Charlie Lunsford won Police of the Year. Fire Lieutenant Ray Keith won the Fireman of the Year. Part-time Ocean Rescue winner for the award was Andrew Miller. Full-time Ocean Rescue was Peter John Coyle. Then we had the Teacher of the Year, Shannon Dwyer, and she's from Orchard View. And then we had Reginald Odom Ramos. He was the Student of the Year, also of Orchard View. So congratulations to all of them. It was a wonderful gathering on Sunday over at the Elks Club, and thank you to the Elks Club for hosting. Also, shout out to Carrabas, who provided the food. Getting questions as to we are not returning or getting public records requests out, so I'll talk to you a little bit further about that. I know that, I mean, it's not the one guy you think, and there's others too, so I'll have that personal conversation. We just won the blue flag. We're going to be doing that celebration. Congratulations. And then finally, seaweed prep. We know it's coming. What are we doing? Is there a way that we could possibly, as a commission, allow Mr. Moore to at least maybe sweep the beach twice if we're in that situation? We're going to end up in, I think, a very, very tough, we get complaints every year about the seaweed. Now that we're going to be seeing so much more of it, I think that we should probably at least have Mr. Moore come back with some suggestions as to how to deal with this, because I think it's going to be a bigger problem than we anticipate. And it's better to be prepared with something to do versus having to go backwards and answer to people. Go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd be more than happy to offer an update, some considerations during the May 16 regular meeting via city manager discussion items.
Can I just, I would just like to join the mayor in empowering you to do something.
Yes, sir.
Like, I don't, like, coming back and having a, like...
Just an update in terms of what we will do.
What you've done, yeah.
We talked at the TDC meeting about this, because they have the environmental people.
Yep.
And it's like a bigger issue, too, because, well, we got sea turtles.
Yes, absolutely.
We got other things.
Right.
So there's a lot of considerations, and it's just, you know, raking up the seaweed.
No, it's not. But there's probably something being done somewhere that we could maybe look at and figure out how to do it better. And we need to do it, because it's common.
Very comfortable being empowered accordingly. However, at the next regular meeting, I will update you in terms of what that will be. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Long, anything?
Not much. Just to say, I got to attend the Rock the Block Habitat event, which was a partnership with the CRA. I saw Renee and Kim and Christina there. I saw Chief Major was there, too. It was a great event. I mean, there was like over 250 volunteers there. So I just want to thank you guys at the CRA, and thanks again to the sponsors who made that happen. I mean, we worked on 10 houses. It was a really hot day, but it was really fun, really good energy, and it was just a great event for the city.
It was great. I'm glad you were able to make it.
Let's go Heat. Let's go Panthers.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes. Yes, I attended the Rock the Block event as well, and good job for all the partnerships and CRA. And I met the chief's daughter. She was there against her will, but she was, but she was painting. But it was a really, it was a really cool event.
So she let you know that, huh?
Well, sort of, kind of, you know, I can kind of read that. But I also received two emails, and I've been asked to sponsor one... uh one from C. Ron Allen with the Knights of Pythagoras. Um, apparent, he gives a a Mother's Day proclamation each year, Commissioner Johnson usually sponsors it. And in her absence, he's asked me to sponsor that. So I'd like to get your um support with sponsoring the proclamation for Mother's Day for.
Do we have that on our list?
It's not on the list.
How do we do it in the past or did we?
She would bring it up and you all would give consensus.
All right, well, why don't we just give consensus?
Permanent consensus?
Yeah, can we just put it on the list?
Yeah, for thirty-two years, he's been doing this, so.
Let's do it.
We do it, we add it permanently at the organizational meeting.
I know, well, then we'll we'll temporarily do it, but it'll be at the organizational meeting next time, there you go.
Okay, and so I also received a a request to uh sponsor from Mr. Patrick Holliday. Um, so pursuant to the section two point four five of the Land Development Regulations, um, I'm sponsoring a proposed amendment uh to the Land Development Regulations made by Mr. Patrick Holliday to the City's Code in order to allow petty cabs in the city.
No.
I would like to request that the City Manager place this item on the coming agenda, nope.
So let me explain something to you. You're the new person.
Of course.
And this dude, that's all he does is he goes for the new person. So don't be offended by us voting it down every time there's a new person.
It's actually not something that the police and fire have supported, it 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 has, there's other issues. So basically, we've always said no to it and there's a lot of reasons why it, but it comes up every single time we have a change.
So, under our rules, um, one person can sponsor it. Um, it manager should put it on a workshop agenda, he has to make his pitch. Obviously, people need to read the room and kind of, you know, feel the room and and understand. But technically, according to our rules, we're not voting it down right now. It's just a public meeting where Commissioner Burns is permitted to essentially in the sunshine ask um that this be placed on a workshop.
We not say that there was going to be three, I thought we changed that.
That's that's when the sponsorship comes before you and then you and then you, he needs three people in order to be able to submit the application.
Okay, but I don't understand, I thought we did it so that there wouldn't be this whole situation because we just continue to just, you know.
And I and I understand that and and again, um, you know, the this commission, I don't know what he's going to present. If it's something that you have an appetite for, you need three people to to agree to it. I I will say this, um, you know, i- if he's operating uh his petty cabs right now, I think that's something you need to consider because technically he would be operating against the code and because he's not allowed to operate the petty cab. So I'm just gonna, so I just, I want to.
I don't, I, is he, he's not down there?
I haven't seen him. But I need one sponsor, so it's got that.
He has a sponsor, so.
I I know our workshops are really full.
It's it's quarterly, it's quarterly, so.
It's a quarterly exercise.
April.
July would be the next opportunity.
I'd I'd like to make a request that until that is brought up, and I mean no disrespect by the sponsorship, so I apologize for my prior comments, but I'd ask the Police Department if there's any petty cabs operating, that they should uh cite them accordingly if they are against ordinance.
You know, I want to say one more thing if I if I may, I'm so sorry, because it's on the same vein. There is a golf cart that is driving around blasting music that is picking, yes, picking up people. I don't know what's going on, but I've seen them and people have talked to me about them. And um there's people in the downtown area that know exactly who this is, don't know how they're picking up their, you know, groups that they're driving around. But that's something that's operating without our authority as well and it's blasting music. I mean, that's one of the things that everybody notices about this particular and bubbles and something else. Yeah, so I don't know, that would be something else that the police officers should probably pursue and make sure that we um stop that from happening as well because it's just opening up Pandora's Box, sorry to interrupt, but I just remembered it, just remembered it.
Okay, and, okay, and next, um, the update of the Set Transformation Plan. Um, do we set a workshop meeting for that as well to, I mean, it's been years that it's outdated and it needs to be um updated. Um, so how does that work?
Um, so I think what was adopted is 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 a different name, um, I think it's the West Atlantic Master Plan.
Update to the West Atlantic Redevelopment Master Plan.
That's it.
Was the name. We decided on.
So, you know, I have spoken to Renee about it. Um, essentially, that started at the CRA level, so I think um if there's an appetite to update that, um, I think that um you would just direct her at your next CRA meeting, but we can, we can start that conversation here if if that's something of interest to you.
You know, that might be a great opportunity for the Advisory Board to consider figuring out because the truth of the matter is, is that what are we going to update? We don't really know unless you have a list of things, but that might be a great opportunity for the Advisory Board to take on as one of their first opport, you know, uh, things to offer for us to follow through with. Anyway, just a suggestion.
Yep, I agree.
And um also um want to get on as a priority somehow talk about a multicultural resource center. Um, the um Haitian uh community has been asking for a center. Um, so I'm uh thinking of a multicultural resource center that would provide um a space and resources to our Haitian community and other immigrant communities that would need um services in language, um immigration, medical health, you know, all of the resources. Um, and um I know that we have a CRA building, I think, on Twelfth Avenue that's been under discussion for other uses. But um, so I'd like to.
The Neighborhood Resource Center?
Uh, what was that?
Neighborhood Resource.
Yes, 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 yes.
I I think it's still city-owned, I don't think we've conveyed it to the CRA. Um, that that might be a good topic for a workshop, um, I know there's been discussions about.
Yeah, my sport.
Okay.
All right, workshop.
And last but not least, um, the the banners, the banner signs, we have an update?
Who's doing that? DDA is doing that.
DDA. Okay.
I was working on an agreement, um, because I told you, I think I told you last time, we don't have an agreement, we need an agreement if you're going to keep it with the DDA. Um, I had actually emailed Laura today, she probably didn't have a chance to respond, but as part of the agreement, I just needed to know what the financial backing was because nobody seems to know in the city, no offense.
No, they don't.
And so um, so we are working on that, um, but uh I had anticipated bringing it to you soon unless there's other direction.
Can it be done in-house? With.
Um. No, I, Missy's not, I don't like to give other people work, Missy's nodding her head, yes.
To be determined, however, there's other logistics we have to be considered.
I would just, I would just jump in that the DDA took ownership of all the banners, Atlantic, Pineapple Grove, East-West, so that they're all managed by the same and replaced at the same time. And and we did that years ago and it's been successful, um, because there's, um, you know, the manager's really clean and of the lights as well. So I think it's it's best to keep it with them and and seem to be on it.
Okay.
If if you have any concerns, we can always put them into the agreement. So, you know, I'm going to bring that before you probably the next meeting or the meeting after because I just want to get that. Since there's an appetite to discuss it, I want to get it on the agenda, memorialize it and have it. So at that time, we can have discussions if there's concerns, if there, whatever the concerns are, we can memorialize and put in the agreement. Um, you know, if you want more um oversight over it, if you want those banners brought before you for consideration, whatever you want, we can always have a discussion about that at that point.
All right, thank you.
Very, very good, Mr. Boyleston.
Yes, uh, last night I was able to go to the opening of the Hampton Inn, um, also known as the the Adam.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, it's beautiful.
I bet it is.
Like any hotel that's in Delray, they're all beautiful, but it really is and their rooms are quite unique, um, in in a great way. Um, am I able to move to reconsider Ms. Anna Kapla's um jet item that Mr. Schmidt brought forward? I was the only one not there, but I I tried to follow his letter, but it was kind of like, you can, you can't, you can, you can't. But at the end, he did ask for a reconsideration.
Um, so the rules do talk about reconsideration. At that meeting, you, I think you had to leave early that day, so it was a four-four, it was a.
Two-two.
Two-two, then it became a three-one. I all, because of the nature of the proceedings, we always want finality to give applicants an ability to, you know, pursue whatever procedure they want. And so I've always, you know, said, we need to do a motion to deny to have some finality to it. So, you know, the, this isn't, so the rules of reconsideration, if you're on the prevailing party, then you can bring it up at the next meeting. So you're not precluded from from bringing that forward on a motion to deny, but there are strict limitations to it as far as having it at the next meeting. I I do want to correct one thing, you know, my staff did not communicate with Ms. Coppolas. Um, it was something that staff questioned, uh, one of the attorneys, he responded back, not really knowing the full situation of it. And so it was one of those like very loaded questions with a very specific response and I don't necessarily agree with it. Um, so I just, and it wasn't sent to her, it was sent to staff and unfortunately it was just forwarded on, so there's that. So, you know, we all, we do have this other provision to the reconsideration that does discuss. Um, almost like in court when you have like new newly discovered evidence, I'm sure Frankel knows this, you can bring it up before the court and ask for like a rehearing. So we do have that provision in there that she could benefit from, because there's no new evidence, right? So this is a cha, this is a difficult one.
The reason I bring it up is because obviously due to my absence, they are lacking that finality, right? I, whether I went, denied it or approved it, at least they would have, you know, gotten that. And so that's why I bring it up, I would rehear it for that purpose.
Thank you. Um, we just table it and let me look.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I'll be there, I'll let you know next week.
It's not even on my list un- until we started the meeting. Um, so I know we've had this conversation before, Lake Ida animals, the Lake Ida Zoo, the statues. Um, I I will say that I had like, I had three concerns, I didn't want us to pay for any, pay for any of it. It would be a selected few. Um, and these are, these are animal statues that are on private property that if you, you know, lived in the Lake, you know, Ida area, um, there was a huge petition that was signed um to move these statues because the private property was sold and it's being redeveloped to move them just like fifty feet over and into the corner of Lake Ida Park. Um, but there were obviously, there were some concerns, there was a lot of them, um, a lot of animals. And uh, so it was down to like, they'd have to be the bronze ones, um, limited to ten, um, that we wouldn't pay for their relocation. So those are the things that I wanted to see and they have achieved those, so I didn't know if there was uh any interest in relocating any of those.
The animals?
Yeah, I I, you know, listen, I think that it it's it's just another thing that the city is taking on and I don't know that it's really going to be beneficial. I think you're going to probably end up getting people crawling on them and climbing on them if it's over in a park and that's liability. And are these things, are these, you know, I just, to me, there's no, from my perspective, it just doesn't cross over if there's something really amazing about them, but it's just, you know, no, I I would say no.
Okay.
I don't know enough before we ended on it.
You don't, really don't remember this whole thing?
Yeah, when was it?
Oh, this was like a big topic, there's a big petition, hundreds of people signed it, the Lake Ida Zoo.
Staff has photos that we can send you if you'd like.
Okay.
What else you got? What else you got?
Um, I I, this is not, we don't have to fix this this year, but just in future years, um, whether, you know, we're here or not, but obviously two of you definitely will be, I would highly recommend more than one day for the annual budget meeting. For the annual, not budget meeting, the annual planning meeting.
Goal setting.
Goal setting, sorry, goal setting. Um, so I I I, when we did, used to do a a day and a half, here's the thing, there's a day, everyone gets in, they talk, we get going a little bit, then there's a coffee break, then there's the lunch, right? Everyone wants to be out by four-thirty, it's not a full day. So I I I tried to put that, put that forward and my concern in regards to not having enough time. So hopefully, though, we'll be able to have some meetings because we have two geo-bonds we have to discuss. We got to discuss public output, I meant public input and and public charrettes and, you know, all of those things before we could spend one dime of that geo-bond. So we won't do it in this workshop meeting because we don't have enough time, uh, but hopefully, you know, we will have additional follow-up meetings.
Well, you know what, I think you're exactly right, there are certain things that we feel like we get rushed to discuss and it's more important that we discuss those items and some of the others because I think that what we end up in a lot of times, and I did speak to the woman who called, I guess they called, she called all of us about that, is that it needs to be a goal-setting meeting, it really needs to be focused on that, not a budget meeting, not about what we can and cannot do. What is our future, what is our thoughts on how this city is going to look into the future? And it includes those types of things, like, are we going to get more money from a a geo-bond and those types of things? That is part of that. Because we want to create what it is that we're going to have going forward. But I think we spend a lot of time, or we have in the past, on, you know, the lists of what each department wants, you know what I'm saying? And that isn't really, I think, conducive to a goal-setting meeting, to me. So if we, if we take that out on this one, I think we'll be able to focus on exactly what you're talking about, that we should be focused.
I do have a lot of confidence in the.
You too.
Facilitator, by the way.
I I was really, I was really pleased with speaking with her.
So hopefully, we can be really efficient in that day.
I'm confident about that as well.
The the last thing, um, there's the um six by six that is coming up, Old School Square Foundation is doing, obviously, it used to be here. It is uh, is being proposed in another location on Congress. Um, I I would just like to share and maybe get consensus um for support. Um, not monetary support, no police, nothing, but just support, letting staff know that, um, I think this is important. You know, that organization, in my opinion, um, was was wronged in the last few years, we're working on our relationship with them. They are still raising funds for our schools, for our kids, for our arts, and they're still going through and and uh, and having their six by six event. And they're doing it in a up and coming location, they moved it out to Congress and we always have to talk about how events need to be outside the core. Um, so I hope, I hope that there's a consensus that, you know, staff will work with the six by, with Old School Square in the six by six to make that a, make that a success this year. And I think it sends a really positive message before we're about to sit down uh with that same organization and have a, you know, a a group meeting. Ms. Jellin, I see you.
I was, I was making a hand signal, okay, so. We have to be careful, right, because the purview of the commission is to set the policy and I understand what you're saying. But we also have these administrative rules where we have a C-TAC committee that has met with about this and has, you know, established certain parameters that relate to the public safety, the public welfare, whether or not the event is conducive for what they want to do, whether or not they have the proper licenses, everything we just went through with Lotus. So we have to let the process play out, right? And if your subject matter experts don't feel that based on the type of the event, the location of the event, certain surrounding elements with the event are conducive to have this event, I think you have to just trust your staff that they're not doing it to be difficult, but they're not supportive of what the commission wants. They're doing it because the 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 the, the property is not, I'm going to give you an example. You know, the parking is an issue, right? There's no sidewalks in that area. And so part of the site plan requires, you know, walking through an open fence. That creates liability for the city, right? Because now you're in the public area. And so these are the types of things that staff is looking at. With all due respect, the application was given a little bit late to staff and so they are working with the applicant and they are trying to process this, evaluate it and make a a proper decision. But, you know, I I think we have to be really careful that we're not overstepping what the commission's purview is versus what his purview is as a CEO.
Ms. Jellin, I have not had one conversation with a staff member in regards to this event or any of the challenges.
I didn't say that you did.
Any challenges that you listed. And I'm certainly not asking for anything to be overlooked that would keep this event from being safe or being aligned with our policy. I just wanted to be known that it has our, it has our support, if it does have our, if it does have have our support, I'm giving thumbs up. Um, and it's like a, it's a, like a sign of good faith to say, hey, we're about to go have this workshop with you, we're about to try to mend fences and we appreciate you doing, in doing that. And I'm not asking for a sponsorship or any funds or anything, it's certainly um no, no favors. But for the commission to go, you know what, we're we're supportive of you, continuing to do that uh event outside of the downtown core. Um, so that 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 was my, that was my.
Okay, I I think we should be careful because, you know, when it comes from bosses, you know, you don't want staff to skew their opinions and skew what they, as a subject matter experts, believe is appropriate because you, you know, the commission wants.
And I don't think they have, I mean, look at the last, look at the last two, I'm sorry, I'm just going to finish. Um, I don't, I don't think that's the case at all because look at the last two events that were supposed to happen at the tennis center. They both had our support and staff did what was right with both of those events, right? Both of those events didn't meet the standards or didn't have the proper protocol and they made the right call and no one's complaining up here, we're aligned with that. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so my question is, is that it sounded like you were saying something just to support something, but you're coming off as there's something else going on and this is all news to me because you're specific.
Going on, we're still evaluating it.
To talking about the fact that they, that they're having some issues going through this process of getting it so that they can actually have this event. So I'm with you and the city, understand. So, I'm with you and the city, understand that we have our limitations, that basically, whatever, whatever happens, you know, with respect to what is in the best interest of the town is what we should be supporting, period.
Agreed.
And I don't think your staff ever looks at an event as anything else, other than this is the criteria, we measure it against the criteria, and we tell you what you need to do. So, obviously, you know, everybody is in alignment. I believe they are, and, you know, I think sometimes we get a hard time, because your staff is making really hard decisions and telling, sometimes telling people, no. You guys all knew what happened with Lotus. That was a very difficult, two conversations that we had to have. And I do think that we sat in a room, and you're, you have a great team here. They made the right decision, understanding that it wasn't going to be popular, they were going to get beat up proper, you know, publicly, but it was the right thing to do for the people that were going. And I think that's how we always travel and make our decisions.
Very, very good.
And just to, so I could throw my two cents in on that real quick. Not asking for any special dispensation for the event, and I certainly trust staff's judgment, but I do hope that staff can figure out a way to make it work for this event, because I do think it's an important event and a really good opportunity for the city. And I will, hopefully, we can make it work.
Mr. Morris is here, why don't you just ask him if they have an approval? The event is...
You know what, yeah, we don't need to be here.